Willian, the alternate, she's not coming.
Oh, okay, well, if I can't.
I have a motion and a second on the agenda, please.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Dr. Smith, would you like to take us off?
Absolutely. So, first session, first item is around the elementary school redistricting for 26, 27. Thank you for your priorities that you shared with us the last time we were together. And I also want to thank Mr. White for really working hard to get these together to present to you tonight. He will go through those and we'll share those with you and then get any feedback there. And then we'll be also ready to have the first community meeting on Thursday evening. So, Mr. White?
Thank you. Alright. Alright, so tonight's objectives, first I'm gonna start with what we've heard from the school board. Then we're gonna jump into all of the considerations for policy really quickly. And then we'll dive into those initial boundary scenarios. Just wanna give you a heads up, every school is impacted. And then there'll be next steps and feedback process. Alright, so what we heard, I watched the tapes, I listened intently, just wanted you to know that. That's why, I'm not gonna go through all of it, we're just sort of major subbullets there, you know. We paid attention to forecasted enrollment and capacity. We heard about utilizing space at our schools, you know, space optimization. Make sure you get the areas, sort of in the outlying areas, make sure you fill those up. In terms of demographics, we talked about keep track of Title I programs, you wanna see that data, we have that. Transportation, let's be efficient and save as possible. Alright. So here are the factors for consideration per the new policy that's coming out fairly soon. It's pretty much the same thing as the old policy, just sort of organize with these subbullets. I just wanted to point out one thing, we heard what you said and we went a step further and added more of these considerations in developing these plans. In particular, I can talk to the contiguous school attendance areas. We removed four islands from our elementary schools with this. So just want you to know, we went above and beyond, just, you know, the primary. We also took into account all the secondary considerations. Alright. So let's start first with scenario red. Just wanna point out, on the left, we have a map of the current boundaries. And on the right, we have a map of scenario red. So the thick, dark line you see on the map, those are the current boundaries. So if you look at scenario red, I'll just zoom to elementary school 18. We see that elementary 18 receives students from Hartwood as well as Falmouth and Rocky Run. So that's how you sort of read, you know, the boundaries, who's going where by looking at those lines. You'll also notice elementary school 19, you see that it grabs students from Stafford. It grabs one planning unit from Grafton. And that planning unit is rather large and you may remember in the high school redistricting process, transportation said, hey, you know what, it'd make my life so much better if you sent them. So that's why we did that. Just wanted to point that out.
Those are the Brookpoint kids that weren't supposed to go to Stafford, were going to Stafford, then went to Brook?
There were like three of them.
Yes.
Yeah, so there are not very many kids, students in that planning unit, but for transportation efficiency purposes, they wanted them to be assigned to ES 19.
Okay.
For elementary, are there more than three kids or like more than high school, still very small?
Still very small.
Okay.
And then you also know this with elementary school 19, the boundary grabs a portion of Windy Creek. And then going north, it grabs a portion of Burns. And moving along.
Can I ask a quick question just about elementary school 19?
Yes.
Do you, the kids who will be going to elementary school 19, will all of them go to Stafford Middle and Brookpoint?
Oh, not likely to happen. Most of our, we don't really have feeders that work that way. So, we don't have a feeder alignment that works where this school automatically, everyone goes to this school.
I mean, it just seems like, given that it's a campus kind of thing, that it would be good if that could happen. But are you saying that would be?
I'm saying, off the top of my head, I, I'm gonna say not a hundred percent, but there will be some alignment, but it won't be perfect alignment.
Okay.
Is it, I mean, do we know, I mean, other than the fact that there's, the middle schools are sort of geographically squared?
Yeah.
Is there any reason why we would, I mean, it's, I mean, is there any reason? Cause I see the way this is split over here and you were saying this was evaluated by transportation. Like, that seems kind of pretty far away from 19?
Yeah, again, in their opinion, it was more efficient to route the kids to 19 than to Grafton Village, just the way the roads are set up.
Okay.
And so that's why that moved, that's why that looks that way. Cause visually, it looks a little interesting.
What middle school would these kids go to, just out of curiosity?
Which?
On this section here? Is that?
So, these kids go to Stafford Middle, but then they, we just redistricted them to Forge.
Okay, okay. I'm just trying to follow, I'm sorry.
Got it. So, you'll notice in the northern section of the map, there've been some very, there've been some changes as well. If you look at the Park Ridge area, what we tried to do was go back in and balance enrollment with Park Ridge. So it sort of gets, it looks similar to its old boundary prior to us having a crowding issue with Park Ridge. And so we try to make fixes, balance enrollment and, you know, keep things.
So that little, that little blue circle, is that an island or is it just that you've got it? That's North Stafford High School.
Yes.
Parents who have children that need to attend an elementary school would send their children to Garrisonville instead of another school. Currently, the parents of children at North go to Kate Waller Barrett.
Wait, say that again, so parents?
So if you work at North and you have an elementary school student who needs to go to school as part of your employment, like you want them to go to school in your feeder pattern? Currently, employees' children are districted for Kate Waller Barrett.
Okay.
And this would move them to Garrisonville.
Is that because of the overcrowding at Park Ridge?
I imagine.
Cause Park Ridge is right next to North. I mean, I would think if, you know, a faculty at North, they'd be wanting to be convenient.
Far enough, they were at Park Ridge.
I still don't, I mean, it's just that little, that little blue circle, is that an island?
There are no residences there, it's literally the high school campus.
Gotcha, okay, gotcha.
I had the same concern when I saw it with, when I saw Kate Waller Barrett colored.
Are we gonna be transporting those kids? But don't the parents have to provide their own transportation? I mean, I thought that was part, that was part of our policy in the past.
If the parents are teachers, we bust them from the parent's location or to the parent's location depending on. The work, work location. Like, yeah.
That's in the policy now?
People have elementary kids dropped off at middle schools or picked up from high schools.
Doesn't their policy, or maybe we changed that too, the policy is to say if they wanted their children to go to, you know, out of their district where they live in, that they had to go to the closest elementary school to where they were assigned.
We assign it, we assign the closest elementary school.
How many kids do we have?
It's not really the closest, it's the assigned.
Kate Waller Barrett is not the closest to it.
Where in that planning unit?
Yeah, in the.
Zero.
Oh, it's zero, okay.
No residents, cause it's, we don't know how many employees, children from North currently attend an elementary school.
Yeah, I'm sorry, not in the entire planning unit, but just in that one little odd shape, there's zero students there.
Okay.
Well, anyway, that's, that's interesting. I didn't know we busted, that's something we probably should look at also.
Okay, and then in the, so the southern portion of the map, you can see what we did in this scenario with elementary school 18, Rocky Run grabs Rappahannock Landing in that area. You can see Hartwood loses a proportion of its boundary. Ferry Farm extends sort of westward along 17, you can see what we did with Grafton Village. So, in this section of the map, one of the primary considerations would try to fill up some of the outlying areas and that's what we attempted to do, so that's why it sort of looks that way right now. And so let me jump into sort of some of the key highlights of scenario red. So we did optimize seating space. There were zero schools over a hundred percent capacity in 2026 when the school opened. And there would be one school that's slated to be over capacity in 2028, which is year three after the school opens. There are two schools slated to be over a hundred percent five years out in 2030. And we have here, it shows the max capacity, those schools would be slated to be at a hundred and three percent, which is still very manageable depending on how the kids are distributed by grade and so forth. Garrisonville, Ferry Farm and Rock Hill are slated to be at eighty-nine percent or higher in 2030, so.
So you're isolating them because they're outlying?
Yeah. With regard to ES 18, it's slated to open at seventy percent utilization and it stays low through 2030. It only gets up to seventy-three percent. So there is some seating space open to accommodate students from Wesley. Of course, ES 18 relieves crowding in the southern portion of the county. And also we have the demographics of what ES 18 will look like, what we're anticipating at. So we have free reduced lunch percentage fifty-four, ELL at eighteen percent and sped at fifteen percent.
So we're keeping, elementary, so we're keeping ES 18 down in anticipation of Wesley coming online?
In this scenario, so we have three scenarios, this is the low scenario for ES 18.
Yeah, cause I mean, most of my, I mean, I'm gonna hold off on my questions until we're done.
Okay.
I have some, I mean, there's, I have some really big concerns about Hartwood L. And even, you know, if we're gonna shift any metric, it should be to more of that. If anything's opening at seventy percent in 2026, it should be Hartwood L, not ES 18. Do you know what I mean?
Yes, yes.
I'm holding off, I wanna see, but, but that's why I wanna hear the discussion first. But in my initial look, like that's been, so, but anyway, alright, I'm here to listen.
Alright. Alright, and then with, or ES 19, this is slated open at ninety-five percent utilized and will not exceed a hundred percent through 2030. Of course, it relieves crowding in the northern section of the county. Running demographics, free reduced lunch at fifty percent, ELL at twenty-four, sped at fifteen. And of course, all three of the scenarios were reviewed by the transportation department and got their feedback and incorporated their feedback into the boundaries. Alright, so let's move on to some of the data. And what we have here is a chart that shows you the projected capacity utilization. It compares the current boundaries to scenario red. So for example, if we look at Barrett, the first school, under the current projections, Barrett is slated to be at a hundred and five percent, a hundred and nine percent, a hundred and fourteen percent. And that shows you 2026, 2028, 2030. To the right of that, you see with scenario red, that improves, it goes from a hundred and five down to ninety percent. It goes from a hundred and nine down to ninety-one percent and it goes from a hundred and fourteen to ninety-six percent. So if you sort of follow that same approach, you'll see how, what the capacity looks like with the new boundaries compared to the old boundaries, how there's an improvement in most instances there. Also, you can look at the before and after for your demographic data, cause I know that was something that was important. So that you can, so for Barrett, you can see it goes from twenty-seven percent down to twenty-four percent. Free reduced lunch, fifty-nine percent down to fifty-eight and so on. So you can see that for all nineteen schools. Alright, so I'm gonna move on to reassignment. So this chart shows you the anticipated number of students moving. And it shows you, the red shows you the school that they're gonna be attending. And then sort of the, the schools that are not in red that are under it is showing where they're coming from. So for example, with Barrett, six hundred and eighty-three students will remain in boundary at Barrett. But Barrett will receive, is projected to receive fifty-one students from Hampton Hills and twenty-two students from Montour. And that sums up to that seven fifty-six. So this shows you for all nineteen schools where the students are coming from and how many. Was there, okay, do you have a specific question I can ask?
No, just like, you're doing such a good job. This is fantastic.
Thank you, I tried. Alright, so if no one has any questions, so.
Garrisonville shows it receiving, oh, is the number that they're keeping is on the bottom of Garrisonville?
That's correct.
They're alphabetical.
Yeah, so they're not moving, it's in alphabetical order.
Oh, okay.
So Garrisonville will keep four hundred and twenty-eight of its current students, they're not moving them. But they're gonna receive two hundred and seven students from Barrett. And so for example, ES 18 and 19, since they definitely don't exist, they're only gonna receive from other schools. And then we see like, so for example, ES 18 receives four hundred and four from Rocky Run, a hundred and ninety-two from Hartwood and a hundred and fifty-five from Falmouth, these are all projections.
So the number in the red is the total projected enrollment, not like school capacity?
That is correct. Yep, that's total enrollment, thank you for making that more clear.
And Mr. White, I know you're gonna touch on this, but this, this includes the total number of students and not taking into account any potential exemptions that might be provided for fifth graders, is that right?
That's correct. So then, yes, this is all grades.
All grades, okay.
And so with, just in terms of the layout of the data, we show you year one, year three and year five, just so you have an idea. Alright, so now I'll move on to scenario orange.
That's a very helpful chart, by the way, to choose. That's very helpful. Thank you for doing that.
Once I figured out how to read it. Which was just now when you said it, so thank you. Right?
Yeah, I had to have him explain it to me, but yes.
It actually made sense to me already.
Well, you're striking one, I saw, now.
Well, you just got out.
Totally know that's true.
Alright, so we're.
Does Montour have trailers?
No.
But they said if they, if they don't get relieved, they will leave them next year. They're not getting much loan, they don't get relief order.
Alright, so now we're sort of within that.
Well, they do, they lose about, it's a six hundred students.
He's trying to start the.
Yeah, so I can get to your questions and all that good stuff too. So, now we're at scenario orange and, you know, some people like to flip back and forth between the two so they can kind of get a visual of how it changes, but I can assure you scenario orange is a little different. There are some changes at ES 18, I'll point out, I know, very subtle. If you look at ES 18 in the orange scenario, you'll notice the blue goes south of the seventeen. So that's the Stafford Lakes Village community. And so we had, we grabbed more students so that we could fill up ES 18 higher.
And lighten up part one a little bit.
Yes.
Yes.
That is great. And up north, the map pretty much stayed the same. You'll see a lot of change, more so in the southern portion of the map, particularly Rocky Run, DS 18 in the southeastern quadrant of the map.
So what, I don't understand, because the numbers are still the same for Hartwood across the board, eighty-six percent, eighty-seven percent, now a hundred percent.
That's because the boundary doesn't change. So when the boundary changes, then the mix of students changes in terms of planning units. But if, if the same planning units are assigned to the same school in each scenario, then the numbers will stay the same. When the numbers change, it's because we've moved the planning unit. So, we don't have.
Oh, you moved that one from Rocky Run though, okay, never mind.
That's a good question, thank you for asking that.
Yeah.
Alright, and so, again, a lot of the change is gonna be towards ES 18, Rocky Run, Falmouth, Conway, Grafton Village and Ferry Farm. Very similar. Again, our goal was try to be as least disruptive as possible to students while at the same time keeping the boundaries contiguous and filling schools up, so.
Why is there zeros under Rocky Run and part of it? I'm curious, I don't see any other zeros.
Yeah, there's, so there are two zeros on there right now and the zeros, they're planning units that don't have students. So, I don't know if you remember.
Oh, okay, so that's an APU.
Yep, that's a plan.
Well, can we, can you, give us that? Yeah, I'm just thinking, if I were a parent looking at this, I would just see zero, I would expect there was nothing. But I get what you're saying, but somehow we need to add to this chart that we're going to put up for everybody to see that there is a planning unit assigned, there's just no kids in that planning unit right now.
Yes, and I do have that, but it's further along, a couple slides down in that reassignment plan, there's a note that talks about that. So we, so we address that.
Put on this chart, okay.
Yeah, it's, oh, if I'm missing it on there, I'll put it on there, I apologize. I'll make sure that it's on.
I'm just thinking about you.
Yep, thank you, I'll make sure.
Neither one, neither one of them went to North, so.
Yeah, so that Falmouth planning unit is John Lee Pratt Park. We split that off the last time because it's like, hey, can you fix this?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the other one was zone commercial, it's that Aldi along seventeen, there's a planning unit that looks kind of weird through there. So we just kind of split that so we'd make it look a little better. Again, there's zero students involved, you know, you got anything? Alright. So let's talk about some of the key highlights of scenario orange. One of the big things, ES 18, it's slated to open at eighty-four percent. So scenario red, it's seventy percent, this one's eighty-four percent. And it stays, it stays below, it stays below a hundred percent through 2030. Or, with regard, same thing with Westlake Development, there's some space. And we look at the demographics, no significant change, fifty-one percent, seventeen percent, fifteen percent sped for ES 18. ES 19, the boundary doesn't change pretty much, we're at ninety-five percent full demographics, they don't change. And then if we wanted to go look into detail for specific schools, we have slide eleven here that shows you the breakdown for capacity and the demographics. Alright, so moving along, here's the reassignment plan for scenario orange. And then at the bottom left corner, sorry, I didn't, I need to make that a little bigger. But it says, it talks about the planning units with zero students. And why they're, you know, in the chart.
Oh, I see. John Lee Pratt Park, the park department.
Correct, that's why it's got the zero there.
So it's not a, I don't understand why we have planning units that have no residences or will never have a residence.
Oh, because I'm sure they'll find a way to put a residence on.
Yeah, I think when it was originally drawn, they made it sort of big and then it got a little clunky looking when it, so we just tried to cosmetically.
Does Stafford Marketplace, is that an APU?
Uh, yes, it does, it has an APU. So the whole county has an APU, yeah. The issue is whether or not there's students there. Alright, so let's move on from.
Cause the plan of the park. Depending on, like, we found along six ten, you know, some of the hotels, you wouldn't think that, you know.
I would think that, cause you may have some homeless students that are in hotels.
Right, so that's why we have to put everything in a planning unit, but.
I don't think the county would allow people to reside in the park.
But a planning unit is more than just a home, right? Isn't a planning unit what it's made, it's not, I took the GIS, it's just, it's more than just that, houses. So that's why, I think.
Yeah, think of it like zip codes.
For the county, I would think that, but for air planning units, I would think we would, but it's.
Can I just ask a question, just in terms of presentation at the end of this? Is it possible to put red, orange, yellow piece by piece beside each other or it just doesn't get too distorted, just so?
Oh, we have that, that's coming up. Good question.
Oh, I had to get, he's all that, by the way, and on line.
You can tell he's done this before, yeah.
Not once or twice.
Alright, so I'm gonna get my smarty notebook, I'm just gonna put that away, cause I don't need it.
Alright, so here's scenario yellow, last one, I promise. ES 18 slated open at ninety-two percent in this scenario. So that's an improved, that's higher than the other two. The demographics doesn't change much for ES 18. ES 19 is the same, there are no changes in demographics. Alright, so then I'll move on. I apologize to utilization demographics here. For those of you at home that wanna see your particular school, what happens. We have it here. And then, here's the reassignment plan. Alright, so now the fun part. Ah, here's where all three are in contrast against each other. Alright, so let's start off, the projected capacity in 2026 by scenario. So the blue is the current boundaries, red, orange and yellow. So, let's start with twenty, twenty-six, well, let's start with ES 18 first. Right now, there is no boundary, that's why it says innate, not blue. However, in scenario red, ES 18 is seventy percent. And scenario orange is eighty-four percent, so that area highlighted in blue is to show you the differences in the three scenarios. And this is just an example for ES 18. But you can do that and see the differences for every school. So you can see the projected capacity for each school and you can also see the demographics for each school, how it changes. So, some of the key highlights are, we'll have to figure out with, in terms of decision points, ES 18 at some point, how much, what capacity do we wanna open it at? Are we gonna go, you know, on the lower end or on the higher? And that's something down the line that we'll have to figure out. Another thing I'd like to point out, cause I'm sort of a data person.
No way.
If we look at, so for example, Burns, we have two schools that are slated to be over capacity in 2030, but they're not by much. Burns is one of them at one hundred and two percent. And so is Montour at a hundred and three percent. So just to give you a frame of reference, if we had a school that's a thousand seats, three percent of that is thirty seats. So just wanna give you a frame of reference. So we're talking about, it's crowded, but it's not so far out of control where it's not potentially manageable depending on how the kids are distributed.
Oh, you're talking, when you say manageable, you're talking about the five percent?
Yeah, so this is not, we haven't reached five percent, but this is three percent, but I just wanna give you a frame of reference.
Okay.
It's less than thirty students in these, for these schools, because they don't have a, an enroll, they don't have a capacity of a thousand. So it's gonna be less than thirty.
Right, and this assumes that your calculation, your predictions are all right, which at the school level, there's gonna be some more, more kind of wiggle.
That's correct. Five years out, they're not gonna be as good as one year out or two years out. So the further out, the more the error.
Right.
But yeah, so just based on, you know, what we're estimating, those two schools are gonna be up there. And we have a couple other schools, if we look at 2030, ES 19 is at a hundred percent, Hartwood's at a hundred percent. Now again, that Hartwood, it doesn't include additional seats and it doesn't, right now, have Westlake in another boundary. It just keeps Westlake right now at Hartwood.
But all of these have Rocky Run quite low.
Yeah, so I think that's my biggest fear in looking at this, is that as we progress through the scenarios, because Hartwood stays the same, we're not finding ways to kind of move the boundaries so that Hartwood is less, so that we don't have that compression on that building. So, I'm not sure how that lays out, but that may be, I, I think that's something that I have to start to look at in the future. Cause each of the scenarios seem to be moving between Rocky Run and, and 18. And I would just like to see maybe a little bit more of, how do we get, I'd like to see, love to see Hartwood start at seventy percent, but, just because we can't tell when we'll get a replacement or, you know, whatever, so.
Is Westlake zoned for Hartwood then?
It would have to be based, based.
Right now, it is.
For, for the geography of it, it would have to be. But I'm less concerned about that, because I know I can also zone Westlake for wherever we want, right? Because, at this point, I know I wouldn't because of transportation and whatnot, but I have to take care of the kids who are here and the building that's standing, and so, I'm sorry for the potential kids that are coming, but, you know, I've got kids that are currently.
But Hartwood's going down by, by twenty-five percent under every scenario.
Yeah, but if you, but if you take a look at the numbers, right, like, if, if I have to justify anything, I don't know that I can justify Hartwood starting at eighty-six percent or whatever. At a year that Rocky Run is starting at seventy percent, right? My bigger concern is the, is the pressure on the Hartwood building than it is on, so, I mean.
Okay, there's one scenario for Rocky Run at that, but the other one, Rocky Run is at ninety-four, ninety-five?
Correct, but what I'm saying is if there's a way to move that, so I've got one scenario where Hartwood is at seventy-one percent, that'd be amazing. I'm not there yet, I'm still listening, but I, that's where my mind sits.
So for me, scenario yellow, where you have Rocky Run Elementary School's boundary, like you have people who live, I, I don't know if there are people living there or not, but right next to the school, they're going, they're going across the road, they're gonna go across seventeen, elementary school eighteen.
Yeah, so it's like a little bit of an island.
Right, so if I could, if I could just explain a little bit, so here's scenario yellow. And so remember, Rocky Run is literally across the street from ES eighteen.
Right.
Yep.
And so in this scenario, we took students from Rocky Run, that's that blue area that's south of seventeen, and we moved them to ES eighteen to get its capacity up above seventy percent.
Right.
So I can't always win.
Yeah.
It's a balancing game.
No, no, and, and alls I'm saying is compared to the other scenarios, it's like, man, you're right on top of that school and we're, you know, in terms of proximity thing.
So just interesting.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about when you're calculating future capacity or projected capacity? Are you using the current capa, so with class size reduction schools, example, you're saying Anthony Burns is gonna be at a hundred and two percent? Is that a hundred and two percent of its current capacity as a class size reduction school?
Yes.
And then if any school were to fluctuate, they might not actually be at a hundred and two percent, because they may, you know, this school might be actually higher, because they're not class size reduction now, but they might be after we redistrict, and then vice versa, something that's locate, looks like it's a hundred and three percent, might not be, because they might lose class size reduction after.
Yeah, like Burns won't be free, I mean, probably qualify in any one of these threes.
Yeah, so Burns would likely, their capacity would likely go up if they lose class size reductions, because now, this class sizes can be larger for K through three. So that would make the capacity bump up just a little bit, wouldn't be, you know, a hundred seats or anything.
Well, since they're so close to being a hu, like, does that bring it down to maybe like ninety-eight, right?
Ninety-eight.
Like, so that, like, and I need to know that for, also for schools that might move in the other direction. If we are looking at them at ninety-six, when they're at a full capacity school, and they become a class size reduction school, we could be at like a hundred and five, right? And we don't want to do that either, so I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, I mean Conway's another one that would probably end up. Losing that, and their capacity is low in the whole three scenarios.
And so is Margaret Brent. Is Margaret Brent's capacity staying low just because of the geographical proximity of students to pick up to go there, is that?
Yes, Margaret Brent, it's, you know, it's, doesn't have as much density as some of the other areas in the county, because it's not directly off seventeen, not directly off six ten, so it's just.
But we talked about moving some kids out of Hartwood to Brent, and, and didn't want to do it, because it's gonna be such a long drive.
Yeah. It's still that very long bus ride.
It is a long drive.
Yeah, but, but that, so then my question is, oh, I'm sorry, Elizabeth, but my que, so I just wrote this down, like, there's five kids over here that are on the side of Rocky Run that can come out of, right? Because the, the little number is, I'm on that big.
And then, and those are details that can be.
Right, but, but that's what I'm saying, like, that's. So in considering it, because I haven't really seen, like, how it's shifting and moving, it, it may not make sense, I don't know, but I, but it is something that I'm, I really, I think we need to be focused on, just because I have really great concerns about that building being.
Well, it shows only forty to thirty-six students though in Hartwood, through all three scenarios. But my question is, how long, when can we redesignate schools as either class size reduction or Title I, based on these scenarios, because some of these schools are gonna lose like half their free and reduced lunch, and other schools are gonna pick it up.
See those numbers go up.
Yeah.
New schools can immediately qualify for class size reduction, at least that used to be the case. But existing schools, it's this weird three-year rolling average, except if COVID hits, then it becomes a five-year rolling average.
But it, but it's air flexibility to designate them, we do not have to keep class size reduction,
Yes, yes.
because that was the issue when we had the last redistricting. We had schools that were clearly not in the same level of need in terms of the numbers of free and reduced, but yet, what had the carryover three years, they had the benefit, but not the, the need that some of the other schools did. So I think that's something we need to address, it maybe, after we finish this, you know, how we're gonna do that.
Yeah, because I'm concerned because Anthony Burns goes from both Title I and class size reduction, and El- and elementary school nineteen picks up all those students, yeah.
And CEP.
Maybe Conway too.
Right, so you're saying, Dr. Smith, you're saying you automatically consider that until you can.
Conway may go that same.
For new schools. For a brand new school, if you open a brand new school, and it has whatever the state requirements are, it immediately would be considered a class size reduction school.
For new school, yeah. Okay.
But, and we can choose to do the class size reduction or not as we wish, but if, if you're an existing school,
Yeah.
it's a three-year running average of re-reduced lunch, that, at least that's what it used to be, to figure that out.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
And so if.
And that's from the date of the redistrict?
It's each year.
It's each, okay.
So.
So they wouldn't even be eligible until, and then if they have to wait three years, and that's, there's gonna be schools that are losing out, so that's something we need to consider with our staffing in, in the schools.
Right. Correct, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Fair Farm in all these scenarios is gonna absolutely shift. Conway is gonna shift the other way.
And Garrisonville is likely gonna shift.
Yeah, and other schools like Cape One there and White Water are not.
Although Conway is not a class, has never made it to class size reduction.
I don't think that, I don't think that.
So if I could just point out here on this slide, so the area where it says free and reduced lunch, we have the, the bolded in black schools. So those are two existing schools that would be going from free and reduced lunch of over forty percent to below that forty percent threshold. And then conversely, the, the two green tuples there, those highlighted areas shows the two schools.
That are picking it up.
Yes, and so these are showing existing, but then if you look at ES eighteen and nineteen, both are slated to open above forty percent free and reduced lunch.
I, I just want to make sure that we're putting whatever resources we kind of place for our schools as soon as we can, so I don't know what that timeline looks like.
So when you say fifty-four, fifty-one percent free and reduced lunch for these new schools, are they, is their capacity being, being calculated for class size reduction?
Not yet, because we don't, in order to do.
Because we have to be desperate first.
That was really what it is, like, if, based on what we're looking at, saying Burns is at a hundred and two, Burns will not be at a hundred and two, because it likely.
Right, and ES eighteen might not be at seventy, or eighty-four, or ninety-two, in the way.
Qualify for class size reduction. Right, higher.
Yeah, these are estimates, I just wanted to clarify that, these are estimates.
So I don't know if it's.
Program capacity changes every year, and it's based on, we look at, for each grade.
Yep.
I mean, so it's, it's a, it's a complex calculation.
Is it premature to ask, based on these scenarios, this might be a Dr. Smith question, if our number of eligible schools might change? Like, if we have six CEP schools now, would they stay about the same, or would we need more or fewer? Um, same with like Title I and like that type of thing, not identifying them, um, because it's premature to actually identify, but generally speaking, is the spread the same? I don't want to go to twelve, and I want to come down to three. But let's remember, we don't know what's gonna happen with Title I, sure. But the students will still be here, and the data will still reflect the need of the community, it just will depend on where the money comes from, to support them.
On what we do.
Yeah, and we're happy to, to project that based on information we have, the scenarios that we have.
Sure.
I think we did try to take a look at that, you can see the, the schools that are above forty percent, and what that looks like, so we were trying to see how that might impact there. In terms of Title I, and, and Dr. Kirchner can correct me if I'm wrong, because I know she was looking at the Title I and the class size reduction and what our options are, but in terms of Title I, we can't include them in our grant, for our, our grant application for Title I, when we haven't, they haven't been opened yet, right? And so we wouldn't, would still be a lag before we can include them. With the additional schools, you also remember the title, the pot of Title I funds, that the pie remains the same, and so it's gonna, if we add two more schools, it's just every Title I school's gonna get a little bit less.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is if we're adding two, is it because we're adding two, or is it because we're shifting populations, and therefore, these two over here aren't anymore? Um, and that's why the number of total schools is really my interest.
Can you shift the money after, so, so let's say, um, Burns is Title I currently, and we haven't opened the new school, but then when we open the new school, suddenly, how quickly can we flip it to send the money to elementary school nineteen from, and remove Burns?
I believe it's with the grant application, but I see Mr. Boling or Dr. Kirchner.
It's a year, so it's based on the prior year enrollment demographics, so you have to have that year where you can't just open it in October, move the money over.
That's on March thirtieth of each year.
But, but we can designate the title schools, right? So if we have now, what do we have, seven or however many, how many?
Eight, uh, seven or eight.
Well, let's just say we have eight right now, and after the redistricting, we could designate five, or six, or whatever. And the money, that, that pie would be split off there, and it would not go to the other ones, is that correct? They're eligible, but we don't have to assign it.
You designate, you can hurt the percent of free and reduced lunch threshold.
Right, because that's gonna change, so it's gonna be significantly changed. If a school's at forty-six percent today, and they end up at twenty-three percent under every scenario, clearly, I would prefer to see that title money go to one of the schools that has increased than.
There's a one-year lag in that, and so they have to be funded for the following year, and then they can come off.
So our, could our one-year lag be next year? If we know for a fact that they're gonna be coming off? The next year.
Like if we vote on redistricting.
It's actual submission of students enrolled at, in, at March, on, at March thirtieth.
For the year. Right. But we, we designate those schools.
March ten of what?
Each year.
Okay. The, the government doesn't tell us what schools are Title I, we designate the schools that we want to be Title I. So, so is that something that we as a, as a school system have the authority to designate schools?
We set the, we set the threshold, right? So we can't change, like, we can't cherry pick, we, there's a threshold, and the schools that are above are the schools that are below.
Right, but, but we can, in effect, we could possibly set the threshold where some schools would get more than they would get if there were more schools in there.
But I think the problem is that.
But it's based on per pupil, so you would set the threshold, and then based on the per pupil of the number of students in the building, that would impact the amount in that building, based on our local inconsistent rules about the threshold at which we are identifying a Title I school.
Right, but we could set the threshold so that it did not include a school that perhaps was included today.
But I think what you're saying too, is that if we, once we red, set the redistricting boundaries, and we do already know what the percentages are, but the course of the next year while we're preparing for that school to open, that doesn't count, it's towards what you're saying, which is the lag in that year, and that's what I think is, you're asking, right?
I just, I just have, oh, I've been through this before, and it really bothered me, that we were giving extra resources to schools that didn't really fit our definition of, you know, needing it, because, and it was just because of this rolling average that, you know, that, that the state put in. Now, the rolling average can be to our advantage, but in these cases, I, our resources are limited, and I wanted to go to the schools that really need it, and this goes back to your point about the per pupil allocation. It's not exactly a per pupil allocation, but it's additional funding for schools with higher needs populations. So it's something we can discuss later, but when does that application go in? Because we're gonna have to know a year.
It's due by, I believe it's June, is that correct?
Okay, and the application.
Okay. It'll, it'll come to you before it goes to the.
Right, but, but it comes to us and it's on the consent agenda. When, when it goes in, what year is that for? Is that for the, a year for that?
The following year.
Okay, so the application we file, that comes to us for approval in July, won't be for the year that this redistricting is in effect.
But it has to be based on numbers, actual numbers on March thirtieth, so you can't predetermine that ES.
March thirtieth of what year? This year?
The, this current year for next year. So, for instance, next year on March thirtieth, we could not identify ES eighteen as a Title I school, because they don't have any actual, uh, numbers yet.
But can they be added in when they open? Is that what?
After the March thirtieth point in time, we would look at the.
So the first year, they can't qualify for anything?
Correct, and you can't move the funding, except based on.
Once they receive Title I designation, that means that you can remove them, but if, if there's a one-year lag, after you remove them.
So they won't get any, so, so eighteen and nineteen, even though they're, they may be one of, two of our highest need schools, cannot get any additional funding.
Until after the first year they're.
Because of the.
That is correct.
What about class size reduction?
Can they open with class size reduction?
Have they, because I thought they could open with class size reduction, but I'm being wrong.
That's, that's.
I would need to talk to Patrick about that one to be, uh, sure.
It's sort of, we're already opening with class size reduction, because for the most part, we're already.
They won't know if they can.
I'm not throwing that.
But that's only, because it's only one, right, not a building.
One additional note, the board at one point did make a decision to only fund elementary schools with Title I funding.
Right.
That could be revisited based on free and reduced lunch rates at other schools, and we do have some that are inching up that are middle school.
I was just gonna ask that. Can we set up a work session at some point, maybe in the summer to, to look at this? Yeah, let's just do a work session on it. Because I think, I think it would be helpful to get all this information and put it on a spreadsheet, we can, we can do where.
So Fab could talk about anything that's going to actually help us with this decision-making process, and then we could do a more global work session once we've made a decision on how, what our options are.
Wow. So Missy, Missy, if one. Like magic. You would add to the Fab agenda, the Title I and classroom reduction information, and have that to apply to this.
It's like there's an out, like somebody's listening in.
That's right.
I know.
Seren, perhaps.
Exactly.
If I only hit the red button.
Number to table, get in here now, get in here now.
Adding middle school and high school.
Okay, so the question was class size reduction, can, can you qualify for it as soon as you open, or does it have to take a year?
It takes more than a year.
More than a year, for new schools.
Uh, for, uh, so I will check with Mr. Fulmer, because this comes through the state's calculation tool.
Right.
But it is, you cannot be based on projected enrollment, it has to be based on historic enrollment, and they only do the recalculations during biennium, or months before biennium, and so depend, I, you'll have to forgive me, I don't recall which year the biennium, it'll be when the school's open, but until that, yeah. So they might be doing a recalculation after one year, but we would have to check on that.
I see what you're saying.
So, adding minimum, it will need to have been open for one year, and depending on where it falls in the cycle, it might be longer.
Okay.
And then we, we should get, we have our work session, we should get information about how much we pay to participate in class size reduction, you know, how much we get and how much we pay, and we might want to consider not accepting it where it's not needed, and taking what we pay and use that for, you know, the new schools, or schools that, um, could need it. Because it, it's, it's a real disadvantage to the other schools. That is such a disadvantage.
The Patrick question, trying to, or, I don't even know whose question it is, but, um, does that biennium tie in, does that mess us up often? Is it worth us advocating to have them, like, do it every year?
The, the biennium tie-in is not in and of itself, uh, the challenge, uh, the challenge that we experienced was that they did not do a reset during COVID years, and then when they did do a reset, they essentially said, we're going to ignore a couple of years of enrollment data, because we know that enrollment and membership statewide was wonky during those years. And so it has led to a lag in adjustment of at least one school that shouldn't have rolled off CSR.
Which really hurt us now, because we never really, our enrollment recovered so quickly.
Right.
Yes.
So, so that is a place where the, the structure of the annual review itself is not really a problem, it has, there have been some challenges the last few years because of the decisions for how to implement biennial review, the data that's into it.
Anyone else on?
Um, I just, Lionel, I just have a question too, based on like getting information out to the public in terms of, you know, where the, where the numbers are coming from for Westlake, if we could go back and add to the, the information that we're presenting, the number of expected houses, not just in Westlake, but on Centerport Parkway in particular, because they're, like, we know there's all kinds of subdivisions coming over there as well. So it'll just help us.
Okay.
And by us, probably I just mean me, but to continually remind it, right, like, of how many subdivisions were, because again, we're talking about potential people, not people that are here currently, but I need for people to understand, like, the weight of what's actually coming, and I think we can forget that a little bit, like, seven hundred and eighty-four homes is not a small number of homes that are coming to Westlake, so. So if we can continue to put that in our, I don't care if it's asterisked or whatever, but just continue to remind people about the, the growth numbers that are coming, that would be really helpful.
Okay.
Um, Lionel, what about, uh, rising fifth graders? Because I thought I saw something saying there will be no fifth graders in the two new schools, but then the, the, where we have the historic fifth grade thing where, if you want to stay, if, if you're, yeah, so clarification.
Okay, let me just move on real quick, and then I'll jump on that.
Sure.
So for those people watching at home, with regards to next steps, here's our community engagement overview, we have a community meeting March thirteenth, community meeting number one, and you can see on this slide, upcoming engagement opportunities. Okay, in terms of, you have questions after you see the, the presentations posted on our website, you can reach me directly, you have my email.
We can call you directly, did you hear that?
Call the public.
No. It's on board.
Public can.
Oh, the public can call you.
Public can call me directly, email me, call me.
Why are we public too? Yes, I am.
Yep.
I am.
I got kids in the school. I got kids in the school.
And then, all right, so let's get to that exemption, that's what we were talking about. So, so historically, the school board's desire has been to allow rising fifth graders to remain at the current school. I found this by going back to the, the last elementary redistricting and I grabbed the text from there. And transportation to and from school must be provided by the student's parents or guardians.
Right.
And this exemption clause has not been, was not extended to siblings of rising fifth graders. This is what we did last time.
It's up to the board.
And we've done that many times.
And we've done that, we've done that for twenty years.
Yes, yeah.
And I think the only thing we do differently is those, um, we would, I think we talked about, um, at least on the high school level for kids that don't have a school to go to otherwise, because there won't be a senior class at high school six, so we provide transportation for those students to stay at their school.
Why are there no fifth graders at ES eighteen and nineteen? That doesn't make any sense.
I didn't know, I, I saw something and I don't know what.
That doesn't make any sense to me. We've always had all the grades for elementary and middle.
I wondered about that.
Because otherwise they wouldn't get an exemption, right?
I think you're saying.
They would, what would they do?
Well, are we? I don't know. I mean, I thought I read somewhere something and I may misread.
Are they gonna have a fifth?
So, would it be a fifth grade class for eighteen and nineteen?
So, what I'm thinking is, so if you're in an existing school, the question becomes, if you're at Hartwood, does that, that's just an example, does that student stay at Hartwood to finish their fifth grade year? Or?
Only if they get, they qualify for this exemption.
Yeah, I, I think, but, so, so if I'm hearing the discussion right, cause then I'm feeling like I interpreted this page wrong. Um, I mean, I feel like elementary school is very different than being a high school. Being a fifth grader is very different than being in high school.
Yes, exactly.
And I think at this point, we have to rip a band-aid off and just move, we're moving.
Okay.
I mean, these schools are close enough, whatever, we're moving subsets of kids that aren't being straddled or trying to spend their last year here with their friends, right?
Their neighbors, little neighbors, friends.
Their neighbors or whatever.
And they are bussin' by it as opposed to seniors.
Correct, so I kinda feel like if that's the way I'm reading, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with opening new elementary schools without fifth grade.
I don't know.
The transportation is pretty awesome.
Without this grade class, yes.
We're gonna make sure that we're not gonna end up with a school with thirty fifth graders, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
Yeah, one class, like how do you do that?
Fifth, yeah, or not even, right? Um, that's my only concern, I'm happy to go in either direction, but I don't.
I, I just, I understand it with high school, but without elementary school, I'm just, I mean, they're, then,
Uh-huh.
they'll move with their peers, which I think is much advantageous than, than.
And their siblings. I agree.
Cause the, the geography supports that, vice what we have for our high school, so.
But we've allowed it in the past and I don't think we've ever had that much of it, acceptance of it. It's, 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 it's an accommodation to some families, it's one of those, who are able to provide transportation.
Well, with all due respect, the last time we would have been in this scenario was two thousand and six. Because Moncur was a rebuild and so we wouldn't have been under the same scenario.
Yeah, that was twenty years ago.
And, well, that was a long time ago, um.
And then, Moncur wasn't built that long ago.
It wasn't twenty nineteen, but it was a school.
Well, twenty nineteen, yeah.
It was, it was a replacement school, so it was, in theory, not redistricted to fill with all the kids. I know you added students.
Well, you can ask Ms. Guy, who's, she would have changed Moncur.
But I don't wanna pick that wound.
I, I, and you're about to redistricting, I am still angry.
I'm not gonna pick that wound, but the last time we opened an empty school that we needed to fill was in two thousand and six.
Okay, well, so.
This is. I am.
It's mostly.
We don't actually have a really long history on how to do this. Um, I don't know what you guys did for middle school when y'all, when you opened middle school.
I, I don't think we did it.
I haven't done it for next, I haven't done a middle school.
We've done it, we hit it for high school and then we did it for elementary, but when, when there were siblings,
In two thousand nine, you did that many years in five.
Generally, the parents just moved everybody so they could stay together. But, but I don't see how we could allow them just across the board to stay at the existing schools and then the transportation would be, you know, going back and forth. It's, I mean, the whole point of this is, is almost a accommodation of privilege is that, is that the families have to provide the transportation. We're not burdening transportation, you know, with it.
With it.
Yeah, that's.
But I assume it would be starting with a fifth grade.
I, I think it opens us up to.
Yeah. I think if, yeah. I think if any parent has a significant issue, maybe they have a student with an IEP or something, I think they will address it with the principal and that it can be part of that. But I don't know that I wanna make a blank exception statement.
So, why don't we listen to the comments at the public hearings, to the community meetings and see what,
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, yeah.
It's something that, you know, to think about, so that they can kind of tell us how to deal.
But I think it's important to note that there is, is a large difference between accommodating high school seniors and accommodating.
Well, I, I can tell you the reason that came up is because there was a lot of angst in the high schools and maybe it was back in two thousand and five, but among the, the families. And, and it was a response to the community, you know, input that that came up. And it was not that large a number. And I'm not, you know, saying we need to do it now, but I would like to listen to what the, um, what the, what the families have to say.
Yeah, no, I think it's, well, I think it's important to put it out there that the consideration is, we would open fully all grades.
Yeah, we. We have to open a fifth grade there.
Yeah, I, I feel so.
That's not, it's not fair to the students if we don't.
So, I have a question. Is it possible for you guys with y'all's magic computers to look at the number of fifth graders this may impact and how that would look with transportation? Would it be disastrous to grandfather or whatever, you know what I'm saying? Can you guys give us that input?
Yeah, we can give you, uh, like estimates of how many fifth graders.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a fair estimate, but, but.
It's good for, good for transportation, cause the families are gonna be transporting the kids.
Okay.
It can't be an A P for transportation.
Yeah.
If they trans, you know, if they do that.
Yeah.
It's another car rider, essentially.
Right.
Okay.
But that almost makes it more realistic then to say, we're starting with a fifth grade. You know, like, I, I'm not even sure about the exemption piece unless, like, to Dr. Warner's point, it's for an IEP or for, like, oh, they do consider you shows.
But we don't need to make an exemption for an IEP, cause there's gonna be an IEP meeting and that team is gonna decide where that child should be.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is that.
It's not an exemption for an IEP.
No, but what I'm saying is, is that instead of saying no exceptions or no exemptions or whatever, that's not necessarily the case. The case would be just to say we're opening with fifth grade and then exemptions on.
So, we have our town hall on this, our first redistricting town hall is at Stafford High School on Thursday night. I'll say it again at the end of our next meeting. Um, there were, you can reflect back on the Friday memo, there were a couple of options that Mr. White has already penciled in on his calendar to hold for us over the next few days to kind of talk specifics. Um, and so we can reach out and set those up.
And are we accepting digital comments as well?
Yes.
That's what we traditionally have done with redistricting.
Well, that was my other question.
And the, and that's gonna be part of this, anyone can, at any time, up to, you know, a certain date, submit digital comments that will come to all of us, yes.
Before we move to the next agenda item, let's take a quick recess, because Lucy says you can bring our dinner in and we need a restroom.
Great job, great job.
Yeah, so, uh, we are coming to you today with an update on Drew Middle School plans and how those are coming along. Excited for your feedback and direction on a few items and, uh, so Mr. Towery's gonna kick us off.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Smith, members of the board. Um, we are excited to present to you our progress here on Drew Middle School at Oak Knoll Farm, if you will, off Cliff Farm Road. Um, so in front of you, um, there's actually a copy of our, our schedule, where we're at in terms of the overall design process and we'll, I'll refer back to that later. And as you can see, um, we're here today to give feedback, um, from you with some specific guidance on how to move forward for auditorium spaces. Um, I do wanna stress with everybody that this is an iterative process where things go back and forth as we coalesce around final design, but that we also have a timeline with this. Um, so if we wanna open the doors of this facility in August of twenty-eight to new students, um, your input here today and the incoming needs and will have real-time impact on those design decisions and how we proceed. Obviously, we also have a budget we're dealing with as well. Um, so we'll do our best at every step of this process to help you understand how your decisions and guidance impact that budget. Um, we've been very successful recently with having some cost-effective designs. Um, so we're always looking for opportunities to refine scope. And I'll give you some recent examples here that the board may wish to opine on today as we get into this. Um, just even in the past week, um, we've been talking among staff and there's been a recommendation to consider removing tennis courts from the rebuild. Um, and that's because of the current use of the tennis courts at the existing middle schools as well as our ability to maintain them. Um, in, in the same vein, we were debating whether or not to have lockers in the middle schools and the consensus has been that yes, we are gonna recommend to continue to keep lockers in the middle schools, but those may be items that the board might have some input on today. But as you'll see, those, this is a live iterative, iterative process and we're still working out those types of decisions. Um, so I'm gonna turn this over now to Tom Lee. Uh, Tom and his team at Samaha Associates are the architect for this, um, project here for us. He'll describe to you how this design has evolved, the concepts in play and answer questions you might have. Um, Mr., Mr. Lee's group is also, Samaha's also the same group has recently done the, um, elementary school design for us. So, we know we've got a great partner here with us who's, um, good at helping us get those cost-effective designs that still meet the community needs, uh, so, Tom?
And he brings good cookies.
He brings good cookies.
Thank you so much, I appreciate everyone's time tonight. And I'll just start by opening up, under follow-on with Jason's comments about where we are in the process and today we're the last date on this slide. But you can see we reached out, we've gotten a lot of input from educators, from community members and so on. And you guys have been a part of this process as well, so we're just kind of a step along the way and I'd say we're moving into schematic design is the phase that we're in currently. So, we're, we haven't locked in down any of the design, but, um, have gotten a lot of great feedback along the way. Uh, and this is just an example of that from the November fourteenth meeting where we engaged the community and talked about their preferences and what their major concerns were. And highlighted here in that tallest bar on the chart is the performance space. It was important to the community that we were able to recreate some kind of performing space within the school and we'll talk about that a little bit in the discussion. Um, I don't know if you're familiar with the site off Cliff Farm Roads in Leland. It's, you know, east of Route One, north of Falmouth. Um, and, um, so we're looking at this site, it's a north-south elongated site, but it has quite a bit of, to the kind of west side, some steeper graves and some wetlands along here. So, you'll notice that the site and the building development is all really kind of hugging the STEM road, Cliff Farm Road for the most part. Um, the image on the left is just a enlarged plan of the site plan. You'll notice that currently we have a kiss-and-ride loop at the north side and another loop at the south side. Some of the parking and vehicular movements on the site may change as we develop the plans further, but this was just a general layout to show how the building would be oriented on the site and that we can accommodate the playfield requirements and the egress of the site, um, for movements, separating as much as possible vehicular pedestrian movements along the way. Um, I'll jump right into the conceptual design. To start, since we knew that performing space was gonna be an element that might vary among options, we started with one that didn't consider it. We took it out of the program just to get our design concept together. And here we started with, on the east or right side of the plan, an academic core. And it's a kind of a C shape, a backwards C shape here. And the idea being that then that is split by an activity street that runs north-south with secondary entrances on both the north and south end of the building. And then your activity spaces like dining and the gym on this level in particular are on that kind of more active, louder side of the site. It's nice because these entrances can access both loops on both sides of the building. You have admin here at the front of the building on the first floor between the main entrance, which has the best exposure to the incoming, um, view. And then between the two entrances, so you get a lot of passive visual security from administration. This also allows us to have spaces encircle the courtyard, which gets natural daylight into every teaching space in the school. And then for economy's sake, we stack all of the core classrooms on top of each other, sixth, seventh and eighth grade, um, moving up through the school. And part of the reason we're stacking up the three stories is we want as tight of a developmental footprint as possible because we recognize that A, there's a lot of cost development, or a lot of cost in developing sites and, you know, spreading out here, we also have some steep grades to the west. But also, this school may become a prototype for your middle schools and you may wanna be building it again on another site. And by the tighter the footprint, the more it allows you to consider other sites that may be geographically beneficial to you that if you were to design a sprawling school, you might have less options at your disposal. Um, moving up to the second floor on the kind of the starting place concept, you can see that we still have that academic and, um, activity split through an activity stream on the second floor as well. There'd be a, a glass curtain wall looking into the corridor or into the courtyard, so we have a lot of visual, um, security over top of this space. In this plan, we have the auxiliary gym and then the locker rooms and team rooms and some of the gym storage spaces as well above the dining space. So, this would be a, a split, um, gym activity where you have the aux gym, some others based on the second floor and the main gym below. Noting that the main gym is also a high-volume space, so we wouldn't be building both that on the second floor. The media center sits directly at the top of the administrative, administration department, but it's also projected out over about twelve feet in the front. So, that allows you to have like a large covered walkway at the front of the school. Um, and it can be a nice focal point as well. And it puts the, the media center in the middle of the second floor, which is nice as far as its distance travel to all the different grade levels as a share of space really in the heart of the school. You'll notice we have science coming around, um, the second floor as well, as well as health, close to the gym area. And then we have working family studies here at the north. We also, I should go back one slide. We do have, in the initial concept, two of the level two special ed classrooms, each with a changing room. And we have one special ed level one for each grade level. And this space can really be anywhere along the core classroom areas, just represented here, um, just to show a placeholder. One of the things that we also have in the program on this first floor in the music department is the original, uh, program that was based on the Moncur program from when that was constructed, had two, um, music spaces. And so now we've recommended having three music spaces so you can have a complete space for band, orchestra and choral separately, each with their own instrument storage and so on. And there's been a review of the full program so that we can check out, like, what we would recommend making shifts to, to help add space here and dial back space there a little bit, just to, kind of, for operational purposes.
Can I insert a comment?
Sure.
So, just for perspective, the ed spec program we have is from two thousand nine for the middle schools. So, as we've been going through this, there are certain recommendations that Samaha has made and of course, we're meeting with staff and understanding, okay, this is what the ed spec says, but what's more, what's actually happening in some of these facilities? And that's where, as we've had those meetings, some of these concepts will shift.
Right, thank you. Um, we brought to the third floor. On the third floor, this is just completing out that stacking of the core spaces. In this initial option, we had tech ed upstairs along with eighth grade science. And this was an L-shaped part of the plan and the reason being that if there weren't circulation, we can meet all the egress requirements for this floor with just two stair towers and this becomes the third story. I should mention on the previous floor, even though this is only two-story, the live, actually, I'm gonna go, missing a floor, oops, I'm going the wrong way, that's why.
Keep going up.
Oh, keep going up, there we go, I'm going backwards, there we go. So, here you can see, um, the media center and that's a higher volume space. So, it's not gonna look like you have the roof line at too many different pitches. It's gonna be middle right to left with the activity street being well-defined. But this higher volume space on the second story will somewhat match the elevation of the roof line on the third story over the academic spaces. All right, back on track. So, we wanted to start looking at some options and these really aren't meant to be options. They're more like Jason mentioned, an iterative progression. So, as we learn things, it, you know, somewhat inform the next option. So, I think you'll see that as we go through this. And we started with option one, which is really meant to be capturing what is in the educational specification as it is now, which is from a performance space, and these are all based on solving the performance auditorium kind of discussion. It started with a dining hall with a cafeteria and concept and then a forum space. So, this isn't intended to be necessarily the option that everyone is excited to get behind. It's what the baseline is for discussion purposes and helps us establish the baseline for what the size of the building and the cost and so on. But there's some disadvantages and advantages. Obviously, there's no additional funding needed for this opportunity. Um, the disadvantage is this, the dining really doesn't have any flexibility for use as another space at the same time as it's being used in this auditorium type function. Um, it's not really a dynamic performing space, it doesn't have great acoustics, it's not a high-volume space. There's some kind of obvious negatives to this idea, but it is on the first floor and it is off the main activity street and it's what's in the current program.
Where are the elevators?
So, in this concept, there's an elevator up at the right upper corner here, that's a three-story elevator. And then there's a two-story elevator here off the activity street. So, we wanted to separate them and we moved them around in different options as well. Uh, but we do like to have two elevators in the school in case one's out of service for, uh, no, it's.
We, we had an, an issue after.
We had an issue after the council was built, there was basically one elevator that was used. And if that elevator wasn't working, students that needed it couldn't get up. And they also couldn't have a key. And it was, you know, really, you know, not enough to have one. And it needs to be strategically located because if a child is in a wheelchair and he has to get to that elevator, we don't want that child to be late for class because they have to go so far to get to an elevator and then get back.
Well, I like that we have this one near kind of like the athletic side of things. So yeah, they're going up to a junior gym or something like that if we went with that.
Does the second one go up to three stories?
The second one goes up to the three stories. And that was maybe a weakness in this plan was that the elevator off the activity street only went two stories. And in a bigger plan, both go three stories. So if there is an evening in the third floor, you have that redundancy in service.
So if you go to the third floor again, maybe, I thought it was really only part of the school was the third floor. That's why it wouldn't have gone all three there.
Right. So in this case, this one is only one that goes three stories because we added the third floor to this firewall. One of the things I could mention here that's also nice about this design is for evening use, there's a firewall that comes right through this line of the building. So you can close these doors and then the community can utilize the dining hall and the gym, have access to group toilet rooms and to all the egress requirements they need. But they're not able to get into the rest of the school. Separately from that, if there's an interest in getting into the media center and those spaces, there's another series of doors over here where they could get to the main entrance, the media center and those activity street spaces. But the idea is when the school is not in use to close out the core classroom spaces, so you have less space to try to monitor and.
That goes back to a lot of the feedback. We heard that we want the.
That's what Parks and Rec asked for.
Correct, yes. A community facility that can be used in the evenings and.
This might be a dumb question. Are the athletic fields closely, like the athletic entrance? I mean, I don't want to assume that there's.
Yeah, so the gym is on the southwest corner towards the fields.
So you can see that the gym, if you, if it's.
So where?
That blue.
That's the gym.
Right. Where that orients closest to the field.
There's a little parking lot between them at the moment.
Discussion now of us extending this.
It's not on the other side.
North parking lot a little bit and reducing the south parking lot for the real purpose of bringing the fields even closer to the school. So anytime we can make little edits like that, we're doing it.
Is there a bus loop that's separate from the car riders somehow?
Correct, yes.
Yes. The top lot is.
Sounds like we're fixing a lot of existing issues.
Yeah, that's the goal. One of the things that came up too in our conversations was that there's a preference to have the special ed level two classrooms on the first floor because there's fifteen students per class in there and that'd be a lot of load on the elevators as well. So if we can reduce those, it's a benefit as well. But so this being kind of the baseline, if we go to the second, this is the other end of the spectrum. This is if you were to build a purpose-built separate auditorium, you know, solely for that use. This, you know, has some benefits in that obviously it's the best from an acoustic and performance standpoint, you know, lighting and being able to like basically utilize the stage for a sole purpose. So you're not moving things or in and out for flexible use. But it's also the highest dollar cost and it doesn't create other opportunities in the school for flexible use like allowing the kids to come in to use it as a dining space or using it as an athletic space or having it be a social space or a student activity area. So we thought we'd show this too. And basically whereas option one might have been a zero cost increase, but not necessarily getting you to your goals. Option two is more of like a six to seven million dollar cost increase potentially. And we wanted to share that. One of the other hurdles is you do have an auditorium program in your high school ed spec. So this might start to get up against that program and there might be discussions among the school board like where do you provide performing arts or performance spaces in which education specifications?
What's the current cost savings projection?
Cost savings from.
From the budget amount. I thought we.
So right now, you go back to the original option. The original option.
I'm going to learn which ones are.
I'm sorry. I don't mean, I couldn't know what to get to the end. I'm just, when you said six to seven million, that's of course, we don't have.
So that would be.
But if we have it in savings, it's something.
But we don't really have it in savings. The county is already accounting those savings on their side.
I understand. You're saying from the elementary schools or other.
Or even from this one, I mean, considering that we did save money in elementary, it's possible.
Right. So right now we're a little over a hundred and thirteen million on the total budget. And that was above the budget from, I think it was about two years ago. Since then, we've been able to save some money on the elementaries. And so we've already, in theory, using some of those savings towards the, towards the middle school. So this would take that one thirteen up to closer to one twenty.
So there's no, there's no pot to pull from to possibly pay for that auditorium, at least today.
And I, I think to Ms. Sigman, the county has made clear that they've already reprogrammed those funds from a capital plan.
As you mentioned, this is a good place to see it too. The original program has the three thousand square foot forum and so on. In earlier phases, we were looking at more of a student activity space. So we had like some social stair seating and so on. But through our conversations with staff and educators, we've learned that that also needs to serve a function for, you know, teacher improved like, you know, continuing education from work and everything else. So it needs to be also a enclosed space or somewhere you can use for a, for lecturing as well. All right. So I'll get back up to the separate auditorium option. And it doesn't change much else in the plan other than having this space. The other negative potentially about this is it does create additional footprint to the building. So it expands that site area development and it may be less accommodating.
One, again, sorry, let me jump in one other thing here because I know this is, may come up. If we desire to bid our auditorium as an add-on on bid day, this is probably the cleanest option to do that with. The other options, which we'll go through here in a minute, more or less incorporate those performing spaces into the school and become much more difficult if not perhaps impossible to really add, or really, really do as an add-on.
Sorry, go ahead.
So the idea being that if on bid day, there's enough overall savings that we could actually afford that purpose-built auditorium space, this is the cleanest option to do that.
When would we have to make an actual decision on doing one of these?
We're asking the board for some direction today on which, which way we can be counting on this auditorium performing space.
And we're hoping with each option, that decision gets easier.
We have.
Is that, is that the auditorium moving into the parking lot?
Right. So that would be extending the footprint of the building and the parking at the north side would have to shift to accommodate it.
Okay.
Yes. Dr. Warner, if you have a question, we have.
Yeah, I was just curious if Drew has weighed in on these.
Yes, we have met with Drew's staff. They are, their opinion is that a purpose-built auditorium is what they would most desire.
And I think with each option, what has really influenced each option is trying to get more items off the cons than it has to the prior option. So these aren't, these are a progression of ideas as well.
So another thing that, just to kind of throw in the, for the conversation of auditorium, is when I've been visiting some of these middle schools that don't have an auditorium, like Drew has, some, they are trying to utilize high school space. I mean, my kids are just using the gym. But, you know, being a short person, I know it's a shock. But when I would go, if I had to use one of these cafeteriums, and Dr. Warner and I talked about this, I would be sitting in the cafeteria, looking at a stage going, I'm never going to see my kid. But that's who I came to see, whether they were in the play or the band or the orchestra or the, you know, I'm down here, they're up there. And they're not on risers in the band or in the orchestra. So that was kind of a disadvantage. But one of the things, when I heard, when I was at Stafford Middle and when I was at Dixon, and of course, when my kids were at Dixon, we did everything in the gym. We sat in the bleachers. You heard everything. You saw everything. It was, you know, that's what we were used to. But they don't. They go to the high schools now. And then to try to get on the high school schedule with their concerts and plays and everything, but they don't get to necessarily get the rehearsals in there. It's like they practice very crowded in their school and go to the high school. So just something to think about. Like I said, I know Drew has that as an advantage, so I could totally see why they would want it.
Well, the other thing I'm concerned about with that is that if we're building a high school with a fine arts center, it makes sense to have a middle school that has these features to feed into that. Drew would likely be.
Right.
Good faculty.
So options, options three and four, as we move ahead here, are really our attempts to try and solve that question or balance a little bit more of this conflict between what, what we're, what we're looking at budget-wise and how, how to also respond to the community's requests.
My concern, and I'll get you, is whatever we decide, should the board of supervisors have wanted us to go in the other direction, which is easier like to change?
Of course.
Yeah, like it's, is it better?
Well, if we have an add-on, it's always within our control.
I think this one because they can easily just not add additions.
Up to when we get to the.
Because we do have a three-on-three scheduled for.
Tomorrow.
No, that's seven-on-seven. But the three-on-three is scheduled for April seventh, which is a month from now, which is a long time. But in the grand scheme of things, it does give them the opportunity to kind of weigh in on this and, you know, kind of give their blessing or express concern to go in a different direction. And, you know, this, these type of decisions have inadvertently caused kind of angst before. So if we could make a decision that we can then, you know, codify after we get their, their thoughts.
Well, as long as we have it as an add-on, I don't think we can, you know, lose anything because we're not offering it. And then we won't add it on unless we either got approval from the supervisors to increase the funding or if the bid came in at a lower amount. So there's, you know, we could in effect put it as an add-on and then go ask the supervisors for more funding if that was something we wanted to do.
It's not more funding because we're still under our budget. It's just getting them to release some of the savings.
Well, no, you, but you're saying six million more for the one that's on.
I think we need to have a discussion on the three-on-three, but decide what we think is best for our students.
Right. Sure, absolutely. But we also.
I'm reluctant.
I don't know that I want to concede anything.
I just want to see three and four.
So, yeah, so, and I, yeah, let's move.
Who's the fourth?
I just want to see the other options.
Let's talk about the other.
Oh, oh, I thought you meant three on four. I think we changed that rules too.
Because this, this has evolved and so I'll have to talk through option three and then option four.
Doctor, you have something.
I can wait till you're going to say the options and I'll wait.
So one of the hurdles we identified in the other former options was not having this flexibility for the performance space. It didn't have any other value during the school day. And we had understood that Drew had a capacity in their current auditorium space of about two hundred and seventy-five kids. Even though we were trying to accommodate about four hundred and thirty kids in the new auditorium, there wasn't any use for dining. There wasn't any use for student activities. It was just basically an empty space except for those few days of the year that it was utilized. So here we had this large courtyard space that was in the center of the school, right off this activity street with a stair accessing it near the dining area. And one of the options was to enclose this courtyard with a glass skylight over the entire thing and make it an interior space and have kind of redefine what a theater is instead of being a fixed auditorium and being more of an amphitheater that would have terrace seating and it would have a stage and it would have storage spaces off of the activity street so that you could stage performances in this. But then also during the school day, you could have students gather out there eating. You could teach combined classes in those spaces. You would have kind of a real active student-focused area at middle school. Whereas we thought the, the auditorium as an addition on here would be one cost of about sixty-seven million. We thought this would be around two and a half to three million dollars. But, you know, it all depends on where you draw the line for things like acoustic control and writing control and how performance pays. How much you make it an amphitheater versus a auditorium.
Towards some schools that have one of these.
So it's a neat, it's a neat idea. It got some traction that it would be a really dynamic space. It would be daylit. It would be, you know, right across your music. So performances moving in and out of the space would be easy. And this also is something that you could potentially do later. But, you know, with all these add-alternates, the concern is like what else do you pay for upfront that can't be taken out with the bid? Like for the auditorium addition, it would be all the civil work, all the stormwater management based on the larger footprint would have to stay. So there would be parts of it you'd be paying for that wouldn't be recouped out of the add-alternate. Similarly here, like mechanical systems and so on. You might not be able to make it a clean separation once you've designed around this concept. But this was a neat idea, to share some ideas. I think there was still an interest in having a more conventional auditorium space. And some of that may have been based on how they've been using this space in the past. But we wanted to be innovative and show some ideas here as well.
And, and again, the idea here was it gets multiple uses throughout the day. Kids could come from the dining areas or from the special ed or art or music areas and use that space during the day. But then it could be easily converted over to a more performance space for a band concert or whatever, choral concert. A concern here is this idea of, you know, having, we all know if it, if it looks expensive, it must have been expensive. And to be, to, at least that's the sentiment, right, that we often face. Part of the reason we gravitated towards this is because we saw this as a cost-effective way to still utilize this space. We're still building the four walls regardless. So if you simply put the glass enclosure on the top and allow that daylight to still come through, we feel it's actually a cost-effective way to use that space versus perhaps, you know, allowing it to be more dead, typical, more dead space, if you will. But then after all of this, we've had a lot of conversations with staff over the past, where we presented these three concepts. And that kind of led us to a fourth concept, which.
I'll jump right into that. And I think this solves a number of earlier issues we had. But it also includes additional spaces that we learned that were needed through our conversations with staff and educators. A few of them, I'll point out the additional spaces first. There was two additional level two special ed rooms, each with their own changing room. There was a digital arts lab that was needed to be adjacent to a engineering or I guess we'd call it a technology space. And then there was also a computer lab, which is really like a business classroom on the space as well. And then there was talk of adding some lockers within. But what we noticed in previous spaces were, one, we had the dining and then we had the kitchen and then we had the, and then we had the gym space. And there was really no reason that the cafeteria, or the kitchen space had to lengthen this corridor. So we moved it off to the side. We kind of consolidated where the loading docks would be, knowing that we'd have a stem off of that upper loop before we get to the unloading area. And then there was also comments that was a kind of a con on some of the earlier schemes is having this split between the aux gym and the main gym on different floors. So what we did is we pulled the aux gym and the locker rooms all down on the first level. And we kept the north-south dimension tight and we just expanded a little bit to the west here. This also allowed us to put the aux gym right next to the gym so that we could have a folding partition in here. So that if you had a very large event, then you'd have basically the overall large gym. Your program has quite a bit of square footage dedicated to the aux gym, more so than we've seen in some other areas. So there's a large footprint for the PE activities. But then we thought back about the forum program that we had and the aux gym's flexibility. So what we proposed here in the center of this space is your three thousand square foot forum that's in your program with your eight hundred square foot stage that seats about, I think it was a hundred and seventy people in just this forum portion. And then what we're proposing is to reduce the square footage of the aux gym and take that twenty-five hundred square feet and put it adjacent here and have this space split by a folding wall and then having telescoping bleachers here at the back so that we could gain the, the auditorium seating now up to about four hundred and thirty students. The idea being that if you wanted to use this for a classroom setting, you could keep this door closed. Or if you wanted to have continuing teacher education going into this space, you could use the forum. In performance nights, you could open the wall. You could telescope the bleachers. And when I mentioned telescoping bleachers, they're not gym bleachers. They would still have the seating and the armrests and the backs and they all come out of the system when they telescope. But then during the day, essentially another activity space for PE. It would have a floor in it that's similar to the gyms. You could do exercise in it. It could be a dance space. It could be whatever the program is during the day when those bleachers are pulled back. And what we liked about this scheme was that it got you the same capacity theater-like space that could have the same performance qualities. And it was also demisable for different group sizes. Because if you ever had a performance where there's only like eighty people in there, you know, five hundred seat auditorium, it doesn't, it's not great for the performance either. So we liked that it being able to tie it down. But there's no additional square footage to get this accommodated in your program. There's, it's within your program for the forum, the stage, and the additional space for the auxiliary gym.
Does that translate into not more?
Does that translate into not more money?
I think there would still be the cost of the lighting and the specialized acoustics and sound systems and things like that, but it wouldn't be big, big money, it would be.
We're not six to seven.
We have expanded the footprint.
Right, and we've expanded the footprint to the west here a bit, but we've reduced it north-south. And I think what we can do is work on the site plan and some of the loop that was across from Cliff Farm Road and maybe kind of massage the plan to make that still fit on the, on the, it's still as, about as compact as we can get.
Right, so this is a larger footprint to Dr. Warner's question. So there would be slightly elevated development costs with this. We're not in the, anywhere close to the six to seven million dollar range, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? Same thing with lighting and some of acoustics, some of those types of things. We're talking much more minimal impact budget stamp. One of, one of, one of the challenges though is that, you know, this is a north-south elongated site and now we're stretching the building this way along that. So we got to take a closer look at the bus loop and some of those other things. But again, this is part of that iterative process where, you know, we're progressing towards a, a thought.
Can acoustics and lighting be upgraded? Could we start with like one level in the initial construction and then?
Sure.
Sure, like a rigging, sound systems, they could be added to later, they could be.
Where you do an add-alt that might upgrade certain systems, right, to, you could go with a very basic system and then have an add-alt that might allow for certain upgrades if we can afford it on bid day, as an example.
Can I ask, the future expansion space, is that undeveloped, is that, is that?
Oh. That's still my question.
Grass.
When we started looking at this, what we wanted to do was give you a space that you could expand a number of classrooms in need in the future. And we originally started by looking at having some space on the third floor as cold dark shell, which we built out and then fitted out later.
Oh, yeah.
But you're still paying for some of that upfront.
Yeah.
So what we decided to propose here is where, on the original plan, we had the art classrooms down here. You could come in later and build a three-story addition here. You could pick up two or three labs per floor or three or four classrooms per floor. It would give you that capacity increase without building any additional infrastructure for space.
This, this ties back to the conversation.
Then where is sixth grade art, sorry?
This, this ties back.
I missed that.
It's moving upstairs.
It's moving upstairs.
Okay.
Right.
So one of the conversations that the board had about a year ago was this question of eleven hundred students or up to fifteen hundred students, right? And the decision was eleven hundred, but if we have some opportunity in the future to flex up, that would be great, right? So this accommodates that concept along with some of the cold dark shell ideas that we even talked about. Again, cold dark shell is something that we could look at and, do folks know when we're saying cold dark shell, what we're talking about is essentially enclosed space that we're, we're constructing the foundation, the walls, the steel, everything. We're not finishing it out, it's walled off and then in the future, it's easy to go in and develop space out, right?
You're still paying for the envelope in the initial construction.
And making sure students can't get into.
They can, it's a wall.
Making a hundred percent.
And some of the reasons people do cold dark shell is because you can't build over top of occupied space with, you know, infrastructure. But if you can build your addition running all three stories, then you could come in over a course of a couple summers and you could build this addition and just take out this partition wall and connect it up. So I, I like the fact that it's internal too because it doesn't affect like where your bus loop is or where your parking loops are. It still gives you the perimeter of the building that's fixed and the contractor could come in and do this in a fairly short order.
And so, and this again is some.
And no one in the building knows it, no one in the building would even know.
You can't tell it's there.
You can't tell, yes, now, now, I will say, I want to, I want to make this clear
that that future expansion space would definitely take us over the hundred and sixty thousand square foot that we've budgeted, right? So that would be something right now, I would say, it's not in our budget, but it could be a bid day add-alt as well, something to consider and see if we have, if we can afford it when we get there and we've got that as an option. Or we say, we know that's developable in the future, that's something.
This is measuring out at about a hundred and sixty-six thousand square feet. It's still in pre-con, or still in pre-schematics, so like we don't have structural steel in there or chases or mechanical, but we try to size everything, you know, two to five percent oversized so that when we start adding chases and steel and, you know, elements we have to remake the building function, then we still maintain the correct square footage for instructional spaces.
Did you guys give us, or can you give us a, a guesstimate for the future of how much it would cost to build it out? Just so my brain can.
We can give, we can pull some numbers together on that.
Just, yeah, I know, obviously it's going to go.
And again, we're not looking for direction today on the cold, cold dark shell concept.
Right, right, right.
What I think we want to hone in on here is from an auditorium, performing arts, forum perspective, which direction does the board think would be best?
Well, I, I like this design just because of its flexibility, but I also, I had been opposed to the concept of a full auditorium because I felt like it was something that none of our other middle schools could have. But at the same time, we're building this high school with fine arts, we have to have pipeline of students that are interested in that. This would get us that.
So, I agree, but then my concern is not all the students that would be applying to our school of performing arts are going to be at this school either.
No, 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 that's true.
So then there is a disparity amongst higher schools.
But it also gives middle schools. This is a whole new, this is like, we're drawing a line.
Yeah. Right.
Like, everything before, like, right now, really, twenty twenty-five is before and then everything we open moving forward is after. And that's what we're doing for our high school or for our elementarys, for our middle.
But it's also, it's also something other middle schools could use. And that's what I was going to ask, right?
Yes.
So instead of using a high school, the other middle schools can use this.
Right.
And then my other question was, would they ever be able to practice on this as a middle school? And maybe that won't work, I'm just wondering if that was something that they could do as well.
Sometimes they did offer like the opportunities for, you know, because they don't really do the before and after like we used to have with our kids. They do everything during the day to get ready for concerts.
Yeah.
And so, to have a, a place where you can have, like, I mean, when I went into Stafford Middle and they had their advanced band all in the room, holy cow, there was no, I mean, they're all blowing breath in that room and it's not set up for all of them to be in a classroom. So, yeah, it would give them an opportunity to do.
Yeah, they could do it after school, potentially, if, if we can do that.
And I, you know, when you think about what schools have and what schools don't have, I, I just think, for me, I'm for the auditorium. I like the, this last option or the second option, yes, because I'm short. Well, no short jokes, please, but I think that it would be.
I'm tall and I agree with you.
Okay, okay, but I just feel like, we are run, we're opening another high school,
Always an alley.
but we're, we're going to run out of opportunities for middle school kids to do their own thing in their own building, which is fine, but I, I mean, I, I just think that we're, we're still in a growing way that we can't afford not to have something, if we're building it, build it right, the way that they need it and we'll use it. And like you said, another middle school could come in and use it, like Dixon could do their performances there, especially if Stafford High School isn't available.
I think there's two other things I really like about this option is, one, is this activity street functions as a lobby for the theater. It's right in the middle of the school.
Yeah, it does.
So that you're placing auditorium that wouldn't need naturally daylight windows in a space that doesn't get access to daylight. Whereas in the addition auditorium option, it really limited the daylighting into the dining area.
But we also, it's also a community resource because we know that our community rents our spaces, uses our spaces for community theater, for, you know, faith-based activities and this becomes another resource.
So that, that would be a selling point for me.
Yeah, because it's, it's all self-contained, because you can block off the rest of the school.
Is understanding, right?
Exactly.
I mean, there are a million high schools in the south, the way we're on, I don't know, so.
Yeah, because of the firewall. Yeah, yeah, always.
But these pull-out, these pull-out seating things, like how well do those work? How much do they break? Because we've talked about that with high school sets.
We know how they are with Chromebooks, how are they going to be with these bleachers?
Yes.
And we've decided against it, but I don't have any experience with it.
Yes.
I mean, they're fairly, they're fairly large and they would be handled similar to like when you operate a mobile wall in one of your schools. It would only be staff members doing it, they don't, they don't pull out manually, it'd be through like a motor-driven situation.
And how many seats would be the, this mechanical?
So in this case, we have.
Like a hundred, it would be almost, it was a little over two hundred, right?
It would double.
Right, it would go from, I wrote this down.
Two hundred and thirty-five, two hundred and forty-five.
It would be one seventy of the fixed seats in the forum, another two sixty in the telescoping.
And then where would the stage be, like if you were, so is the stage for the forum?
That is right here. And then there's stage storage and there's all the, you know, the idea also is that you come in on level here and then the seating, the floor rakes down and then you can come in on stage level here. So you get the ADA compliance, you still get the, the raked floor of the auditorium space so that, you know.
And, and we're talking just a few hundred thousand dollars difference between our budgeted for this type of option?
I think you have the cost of the telescoping bleachers and then the improvements from sound, washing above what you have in the cafeteria.
Or sound.
And additional square footage.
Right, so I think we're in that, I think we're in that half a million to million dollar pool.
Curtains.
Versus six to seven million.
And we, we, versus six to seven.
Or, you have to frame it, right?
I think this is expensive.
Well, I'm for option four, anybody else?
Have you seen, have you seen other forums faces, any of you have done?
I said two for four.
Four.
We're going to.
So we're doing a high school and Silver Spring, it uses a similar concept.
That's two or four, yeah, with four.
It had a telescoping auditorium seating. For the same reasons, they had a very large dance program and they wanted to have more space for student activities both during and after.
I just like the looks of this and I think it's more community-friendly too. I think that'd be, yeah, the image.
Remember, this isn't just an auditorium after school, it could also be a athletic space after school.
Right, right.
It could be.
Where are the lockers in this, in these scenarios?
That's, we're still working on because we haven't really determined the percentage of lockers to students or if they're moving.
You're talking gym lockers or?
Gym lockers are probably lockers. Gym lockers are regular lockers.
Regular lockers.
Probably not a high number, but when they were taken away, some of the students and the parents wrote in in terms of they, that they, their, their children did not want to have to carry personal items.
I think kids are missing out on a world of fun by not going to their lockers in between classes.
Mr. Tower, is it?
Because honestly, when I was, that was all, that's where all the fun happened, at your locker.
That's a, for us to pull the board.
I, I thought you were trying to get them to be, to life trouble.
I, I think, yes, great.
Okay.
Well, do we have the money in our budget to accommodate the half million dollars this is going to cost?
Tomato, tomato, you know.
I, I just want, I think that should be part of this discussion because we, I don't think we can just say, oh, just do it, it's only going to cost a half million. But is there a reasonable expectation we're going to have five hundred thousand in savings that can cover it?
I think right now, we are in the right ballpark in terms of square, gross square footage and what we're costing out at this level is gross square footage and so we are still reasonably in that range, yes.
Okay, I mean, that, I need that to be, yes.
Understood, sure.
We're still in that early push and pull too.
Gross square footage means we're overestimating too.
Well, if you look at like the hundred square options, not hundred and transports.
Are you?
Right. How much is that, how much is that in the savings?
I'm saving.
That's about half a million to a million.
Oh.
So, could, could be, that was by chance, I will say. But the, I think gross square footage is the total square footage of the school. So, but classroom space, yeah, we're, we're answering around a hundred and sixty thousand.
But, so we're close with this.
And we're still looking at exactly.
Except like, one of the things, we talked about the spaces we added, but one of the spaces that staff mentioned we need to leave was we originally had seven science labs and we went to two per grade, so it's just six.
Right.
So to do that, we stacked them all here instead of putting them all four here.
And you know we're time-sensitive and.
Yeah, so that's, so, so that's a savings there too, that we're saying for fine arts is that.
Right, so there's one more, more, less science lab. I'll go to the second and third floor really quickly just so you can see the other things that are discussed. With the digital arts lab, they wanted an adjacent scene here of the tech lab, so we put the tech lab over top of the cafeteria. This also moves all of art to the second floor, so it's newer than the tech lab, so they can share some equipment and systems.
Does art have light?
It does, it's off of this main open courtyard.
Right.
And then.
That's really good in north.
That is good.
And then lastly, we have still the, the L-shaped space on the third floor, but we have working family studies and a business lab up here on this floor as well.
Okay, can we?
The second floor is a freight elevator back there and then correct?
Oh, right, I'm glad to mention that, so.
Larger elevator.
We looked at trying to get the tech lab to the ground floor based on like bringing in materials and so on, but we found we just couldn't stretch the site plan more to do that. So what we did, if you go back to the first floor, we have the loading dock here. So if you come off the loading dock or off this entrance, there's a large freight elevator here, which now would be in the three-story area and it can accommodate all three levels and have this immediate adjacency to art and the tech labs.
And the other, other elevator, is that three stories or stuff?
And the other elevator is right here.
Yeah, and is it two or three stories as well?
Okay, so if we could pull the board on our options, I'll start with you, Dr. Warner.
Wait, wait, okay. It's special, it says, is that on floor number three as well?
Floor number one.
Only one, only one.
Yeah, special at level two is always on level one. The special level, specialty level ones, there's one per grade on each floor.
On each floor, okay, that's what I was wanting.
Right.
Or Dr. Chase?
Yeah, because I saw it, I didn't.
And then some admin spaces are spread out through the building, just to get eyes on all the different corridors.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I like completely separate more auditorium, but this seems like a nice, I don't know, nice alternative, so. Okay.
I like this one because of the cold dark space, whatever it's called.
What was it?
Shell.
Cold dark shells.
Shell.
Oh, sorry.
Because I'm going to.
That's what my was.
Dr. Chase, because she has been helping significant of our students and she has current Drew, so that's.
What did he say? What was the, what was the Drew's special preference? What was Drew's preference?
Drew, Drew did state that they would like a full auditorium.
I think this does get them the full auditorium, it's just kind of a.
In a different way.
It wants to be underwater, like, they're kind of auditorium, so.
Same number of seats.
Yeah, yeah, if it doesn't flood, that would be great.
Ms. Houston?
I mean, so, I mean, I, if we could offer the world, we'd offer the world, right? Like, that's not an option here, but we also have a fiscal obligation here, which is to look at what gives us the, the best bang for our buck. And so for me, it's this one, this feels like a happy medium for everybody, particularly if we could use it as a community space, as, as a, maybe not as a give-back, but even a rent-back. That, to me, sounds, I don't want to, and I'm the least pragmatic out of all of us, I would think, but like, from the perspective of really looking at our finances and what we need to do, I think we need to be responsible.
I, I think this gives everything. Debbie, did you want to weigh in from a student perspective on any of it, or do you?
Um, I did think the amphitheater was pretty, but I like the forum best.
Best?
Because I think if you're not gonna, if you're going to build something, it might as well be the forum because the full auditorium would cost a ton and I don't see much of a difference between it and the forum. Like, not enough to justify, what, sixty million or what?
In the way of space.
Yeah, to justify that.
Six to seven million.
Six, seven, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is about half a million.
Yeah.
Easy come, easy go, just. Consider this then, option four.
Four.
Okay, great, thank you all very much.
So.
We, we won't be back any rule.
That was easy.
For talk to the three on three, it's, it's where we're.
That was easy to miss out.
So we technically have one more agenda item, we don't really have a lot of time. If you just want to give a very quick highlight overview and then we can.
Happy to, happy to do so, we do, and Mr. White's coming in, he was going to help me with that a little bit, we can talk briefly. There are slides in board docs around this, we did take a look at non-transportation zones. We do have thirteen schools that have existing non-transportation zone, they're also referred to walk zones on occasion and so we have looked at those, any impact to, and we, we have to pull together our team that includes law enforcement. I mean, it's a team, a committee that looks to make sure that we have sidewalks and we have crosswalks, how can we really take a look at this?
So this team hasn't met, this is just, they have.
They have, they've met and they've looked at the thirteen schools that have existing walk zones, or non-transportation zones. However, the, any impact and change that we make right now is going to impact car riders and transportation and traffic zones. Our recommendation is that we send this to our transportation work group that's working with the study recommendations, that we consider this for, in the start of twenty twenty-six, the redistricting could have impacted as well. We just think changing walk zones at this point is, is, is not recommended, that we send this to that group. We'll look at the remaining schools.
We're talking about the, the Citizens Advisory Committee for Transportation or a separate?
Yes. I'm talking about send it to, we have a group that's working on the study recommendations. So, and also go to Transportation Advisory, have time to talk with them. And we would also look at it for our, our seventeen schools that don't have a clear front walk zone. So let's do a more thorough review, include the others and we'd come back and work at it for, for start of twenty twenty-six.
Start of twenty twenty-six or should we delay it to the start of twenty twenty-seven?
I think we'll know more once we dig into those other schools and once redistricting is over with as well.
So this was, I think, I mean, this came as a result of some of my concerns when we were dealing with the transportation debacle in, in August.
Yes.
And so for me, I'm fine with all this, except that I really, my biggest thing would be making sure that these redundancies or these, these drivers that are driving back to a school to pick up students that live a half a second away or whatever, like those things. So I, I, as long as we are very clear that we're giving the new re, elementary school things outside of redistricting all a chance, the new transportation, because those were when we requested these things, there were a lot of unknowns that are now known.
Well, there was a lot of problems.
Correct, but, so just to be clear, your team that you're talking about is this organized non-transportation zone safety team that, that's.
Yes, transportation teams, safety and security facilities.
They'll be talking about these things as we go out and as we implement some of the new things, then after redistricting and stuff, right?
There is a team, that, that team looked at the thirteen that currently have those zones, they have not looked at the seventeen that don't have yet and we need to do more work on that.
Do that, and then, but also the redistricting will impact what they found anyway, right?
Yes, we believe so.
Okay. Then that's fine.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. White, that was easy.
That was the easiest meeting you ever had.
Thank you very much to North Stafford High School's Air Force JROTC. Members of tonight's color guard include William Burnley, Canasa Curtis, Kayla Canizales, Zarian LaRose, and Suliman Benadatta. The instructors of the North Stafford High School JROTC program are Lieutenant Colonel Dave Branham and Master Sergeant Tony Mendoza, thank you all. Ms. Hall, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Eason is absent, Ms. Guy?
Yes.
Ms. Halsted?
Me too.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Irish?
Miss Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second for the agenda, please?
Motion to approve.
Okay, please cast your votes on approving the agenda. Ms. Randall, your button is not working. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Is there a motion for the consent?
Um, Madam Chair, I would like to, uh, remove item three point oh eight from consent to discuss, uh, put for action, so we can have a little discussion about that.
Second.
Three point zero eight, okay, we'll add that down to action.
So, motion to approve the remaining consent agenda.
Second. Okay, please cast your votes on the consent packet minus three point zero eight. That also passes seven to zero. Dr. Smith, announcement of administrative personnel appointments.
Yes, thank you, Chair Sigmund, I am excited to announce and share with you several new appointments. Uh, the first one, you actually approved on February eighteenth, and he has started with us, but now that he's here, I wanted to introduce him formally, uh, to everyone, and that is John Wilkots, our new Executive Director of Transportation Services. So, so Mr. Wilkots has joined our team as of March third as our new Executive Director of Transportation Services. Um, he was previously the Executive Director of Transportation and Fleet Services in Houston, Texas, the seventh largest school district in the nation. He also served in Houston as their Training and Support Manager for seven years, and he has been recognized as fostering strong relationships with stakeholders, vendors and customers, ensuring transportation service deliver, delivery within set timelines. He has a proven track record of managing complex projects, optimizing workflow processes, and, uh, supporting that work. He has his bachelor's degree in Business Administration and Project Management from Columbia Southern University, and we are pleased to have him with us, welcome, Mr. Wilkots.
Thank you. So this makes, uh, day seven, I'm all the way from Texas, it's a lot colder, um, but, uh, just would like to say, yeah, thank you. Thank you, uh, but beautiful team in transportation, um, just really excited with working with them, they're doing great work, um, and I would be remiss if I did not say thank you to the beautiful uh, transition and handoff of the baton, uh, by the interim director, Mr. Greg Mackey, so, uh, thank you, looking forward to the opportunity.
All right, our next appointment, I am very excited to, uh, share with you our new Principal of High School Six, yet to be named, um, at, the name of the High School Six, but our new principal is Dr. Mike Kelly. Dr. Kelly will launch the creation and brand of High School Six as the school's founding principal. Dr. Kelly has been a school principal at Virginia Beach City Public Schools since two thousand two, currently serving as the principal at Frank W. Cox High School. The high school, uh, there at Cox High School was identified as an exemplar school by Virginia Department of Education in twenty-four, twenty-five, and in addition to his tenure as a high school principal, he has also served as a clinical associate professor at Virginia Tech. Dr. Kelly chaired three dissertation committees and served on eight additional committees. His work is also reflected in the numerous educational publications, and he's been a presenter at numerous professional conferences, and we are thrilled to have Dr. Kelly with us. He earned his Bachelor of Science degree from California University of Pennsylvania, a Master's Degree in Education and Human Development from GW, and a Doctorate in Education Administration and Policy Studies from George Washington as well, welcome, Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, members of the board, I'd like to, uh, introduce my lovely wife, Amy, who's with me tonight, so, we're very excited about moving to Stafford, it actually gets us a lot closer to her mom too as well, so, uh, looking forward to the experience and to getting to know Stafford better, we're already shopping for houses, so looking forward to it, thank you all.
All right, next, uh, I am thrilled to introduce you to the new Assistant Principal at Anne Moncur Elementary School, Ms. Jennifer Wolfenbarger. Ms. Wolfenbarger will join the administrative team at Moncur Elementary School as the school's new Assistant Principal. She's been a part of Team Stafford for twenty-one years as an employee, first as a teacher at North Stafford High School, and currently at Ferry Farm Elementary School as the school's innovative learning coach. Ms. Wolfenbarger is a graduate of Stafford Schools and attended Moncur as a student from, from grades first through fifth grade. She's committed to this school, and we're welcome, excited to welcome her back to Bear Nation. She earned her Bachelor's Degree in Biology and Music from the University of Virginia, a Master's Degree in Curriculum and Instruction from George Mason University, and a, a degree in Educational Leadership Endorsement from Longwater University. Welcome, Ms. Wolfenbarger, to your new role.
Thank you, Dr. Smith and board, and I'm very excited for this opportunity to continue to serve Stafford at Moncur, and very thankful for my family, my husband Andy, two of my three children are here, one is playing baseball tonight, and my mom and dad, who made the drive to come be with us as well.
I would also like to introduce you to our new Assistant Director of Special Education, Ms. Erin Barker. Ms. Barker will become the new Assistant Director of Special Education in the Office of Student Support Services. Ms. Barker started her career as a teacher with Team Stafford in two thousand eight, moving to an Assistant Principal in two thousand nineteen. She has recently served as interim principal at Ferry Farm Elementary School, and is currently the Assistant Principal at Park Ridge Elementary. Ms. Barker also spends her time as a volunteer for the Girls on the Run After School Program, coordinating all program logistics, and has been recognized as a recipient of the Remarkable Counsel Supporter Award. She earned her Bachelor's Degree from Duquesne University, a Master's Degree in Special Education from ODU, and a Certificate in Administration and Supervision from the University of Virginia, congratulations, Ms. Barker.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Smith, Madam Chair, members of the board, I am really excited to be joining the team over in Special Education and Student Services, and bringing my knowledge and expertise over the years of supporting special education and making sure our kids have exactly what they need. Um, I wouldn't be where I am today, of course, without my husband, John, he's right back there, and my, uh, my mom and dad are logging in virtually along with my mother and father-in-law, so hello. But thank you again so much, and I look forward to joining the team there.
Oh, that concludes, uh, the Ministry of Appointments for this evening.
Great, so we'll move forward with our awards and recognitions.
All right, good evening, School Board members and Dr. Smith, this evening we'll recognize the dedication of many of our most tenured School Board members, and recognize the importance of some of our counselors. Will Ms. Bresnahan please join us at the podium? March two thousand twenty-five is designated as School Nutrition Month in Stafford County, recognizing that student success is closely tied to their health and nutrition. To support student well-being, the school system is introducing new menu items that encourage healthy choices. National Nutrition Month provides an opportunity to engage students, educators, and families in promoting lifelong healthy habits, and we encourage everyone to participate in activities that support nutrition, physical well-being, and a positive culture of wellness, thank you. Will North Stafford's Andrew Weed and Shirley High Middle School's Michael Valerick please join us at the podium? The School Board of Stafford County designates March two thousand twenty-five as Music in Our Schools Month, recognizing the vital role music education plays in fostering creativity, critical thinking, and emotional expression. Music positively impacts students' academic, social, and emotional growth, contributing to their overall success. This month highlights the dedication of music educators and the achievements of students while emphasizing the importance of ensuring all students have access to quality music education. We encourage citizens, educators, parents, and the community leaders to join us in celebrating the value of music and shaping the lives of our students, thank you. Will North Stafford's Carol Kaufman and Larissa Lynch please join us at the podium? March two thousand twenty-five is designated as Youth Art Month, recognizing the vital role of visual arts in fostering creativity, critical thinking, and self-expression. This month highlights the dedication of art educators and celebrates the artistic achievements of students. The school system remains committed to providing a well-rounded education that supports strong support for arts in an inclusive and empowering environment. We encourage the school community to participate in events, exhibitions, and activities that showcase student talent and promote the importance of arts and education. Will Stafford High School's Michael Dodario and Colonial Forge's Lisa Cover Tucci please join us at the podium? March two thousand twenty-five is designated as Theater in Our Schools Month, recognizing the vital role of theater education in fostering creativity, teamwork, and self-expression. Theater programs enrich our communities and instill a lifelong appreciation for the arts while equipping students with essential skills such as communication, collaboration, and problem solving. This month also highlights the dedication of theater educators and students whose hard work deserves recognition. We encourage educators, students, parents, and community members to celebrate and support theater education throughout the month of March and beyond. Will Colonial Forge's high school teacher Heather Thornton please join us at the podium? March two thousand twenty-five is designated as Women's History Month, providing an opportunity to honor the invaluable contributions of women throughout history. Recognize their achievements, struggles, and triumphs fosters equality and inclusivity while inspiring students to pursue their aspirations regardless of gender. Women have made significant impacts in education, science, arts, politics, and social justice, shaping the world we live in today. Ms. Thornton has served on curriculum and textbook committees over the past several years. Two summers ago, she was a Fulbright Fellow to Vietnam and Thailand. We appreciate her impact on our school community and encourage educators, students, parents, and community members to participate in activities that celebrate women's accomplishments. Will Mr. Mackey please join us at the podium? During his tenure as the interim Executive Director of Transportation, Mr. Mackey demonstrated extraordinary leadership, adaptability, and a deep commitment to excellence. Stepping into a critical role during a time of need, he quickly built strong relationships with drivers and staff, fostering a culture of trust, collaboration, and continuous improvement. With his strategic mindset and hands-on approach, Mr. Mackey implemented key operational enhancements that significantly improved the efficiency of the transportation office. His efforts streamlined routing systems, strengthened communication channels, and ultimately transformed the department into a more cohesive and effective team. His ability to listen, problem solve, and lead with compassion made a lasting impact on the department and the school community. Remarkably, Mr. Mackey accomplished all of this while continuing to guide the leadership team of Moncur Elementary School. Balancing both leadership roles, he demonstrated steadfast commitment to students, staff, and families. His unwavering dedication and exceptional flexibility exemplify the very best of leadership and education. Thank you, Mr. Mackey, for everything you have done and will continue to do for the Stafford community.
Okay. We will move forward to item number six on our agenda, our Student Representative Report, Ms. Irish?
Good evening, members of the board, administrators, and community members. Over the last month, Lily and I have worked to expand student awareness and communication, pro-academic support, and encourage civic engagement. February was mostly about laying the foundation. We created and will soon launch a student feedback form and are taking steps to improve peer tutoring by researching existing options and examining how these compare at different schools, and like, what level of education they are, high school, middle school, elementary school, who's doing the tutoring, what subject sits in, that sort of stuff. And then, looking ahead to March, our focus is on implementation. We plan to strengthen student representation by launching our student feedback form soon throughout the schools. For academic support, we are hoping to collaborate with student organizations to promote tutoring, not just at the high school level, but at the middle and elementary school, to also help develop connections between these students. And we're trying to make sure students know how to access these forms of support. On civic engagement, we are looking to find and highlight volunteer opportunities for students through our social media page, and organize a forum through which students can discuss school-related issues and voice their perspectives with us directly. Today, I also had the opportunity to go to the Student Government Luncheon hosted by Dr. Smith, and it was good to not only voice my own opinion, but hear from others. Lily and I are only two people, we only have our own perspectives, and it's nice to hear what other people think are issues that we may not be experiencing ourselves, especially at the other schools, so, thank you for that. Also, if you were not at the last board meeting, I would highly recommend going back and looking at it, cause I thought that how the staff coming to the meeting and voicing their opinions and changing the ideas of the school board members for what to do on the budget was really inspirational, and I think it's really good to see, thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda are citizen comments, there are three minutes allocated to each speaker or group. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, if this, uh, by name, and where you, you don't have any organization speaking tonight. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments, any citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order. Ms. Hall?
Madam Chair, we have two people signed up, the first will be Shannon Fingerholtz, followed by Molly Denham.
Shannon Fingerholtz, Hartwood District, the budget is on a lot of our minds, I agree with folks that spending needs to be sensible and transparency should remain a priority of the school. Understanding what our educators and staff do is part of understanding the value that our county residents receive for the dollars that are spent. The last two Saturdays, our families spent time at school organized events, a sports stacking tournament and a state archery tournament. The PE coaches and other staff helped kids learn skills after school for weeks, spent time reaching out to parents and setting up all the logistics. Then, on their respective Saturdays, started their mornings before the sun even rose, and continued well after lunchtime, setting up, corralling kids, and packing up, even driving all the way out to Dawswell. even driving all the way out to Dawswell. Do you know how much they got paid for all that extra time? Zero. Zero dollars. Thank you to Ms. Carson and all the others that made these experiences possible for the kids. It is easy for us as adults to see a yearly pay next to a school schedule and think, "That ain't so bad." What we don't see are all the additional hours beyond that school schedule, practices, clubs, concerts, prep work, lesson plans, behavioral meetings, researching ways to help a kid, trainings, relearning a test priority because there's a different governor, not because the kids learn any different, and grading that they do after their family goes to bed. Maybe showing a chart of the actual hours educators put into their year will help others across the street understand. Folks have said that test scores in Stafford aren't great right now. Walking through Hartwood and Rocky Run Elementary, every day, kids who need extra assistance are in the hallway learning. It is similar at other schools. The students are faced with distractions of parents walking through with snacks or a class going to PE. This is because of space constraints after years of being told to make do without the ability to plan for the future. Well, the future has came to roost, and we need to make some more strides, even facing the resistance we are now. A parent at the last Community Connections meeting said everything boils down to money, and the priorities should be money. And I cringed. That hurts my little heart. But he was right. It's a tool that we use to acquire necessities. Imagine being required to renegotiate your personal paycheck every year with slideshows and multiple presentations to bosses who some of which refuse to see what your daily responsibilities look like. In the end, they decide you get less than what you need, and you have to go back and decide which bills you aren't paying. While the analogy isn't quite the same, and it's quite common in the government, you can see how much productive work time and future planning is lost to this budget dance of uncertainty. A revenue-sharing agreement with the Board of Supervisors won't solve all the problems. It can, however, create a base to plan off of and save some time in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Molly Denham from the Hartwood District. Yesterday, I attended Dr. Smith's Community Connection at Hartwood Elementary. It was a great forum and a chance for him to learn what is important to the community by asking three important questions for everyone who attended, and I just wanted to share my thoughts from last night. The first question was, "Where do we excel as a school system?" And my answer was simple: We have amazing and caring professionals at all levels working for our schools, taking care of our children. They work with relatively low pay. They work long hours. They have meager-to-no funding. They work with cranky kids and even crankier adults. Yet, they do it anyways, and for that, I am truly thankful. From the teacher, the paraprofessional, the office staff, the school nurse, the counselor, nutrition staff, maintenance staff, the administration, and everyone in between that I may have missed. When people say it takes a village to raise a good child, I see an entire village within every school in our county. The second question was, "What needs to improve?" And man, is this a loaded question. But as I really thought about it, one answer stuck out amongst the others. We need consistency across the board. We need to make sure that every school has the same opportunity and every child has the ability to thrive. This means we don't have an elementary school that gets to go on three field trips a year while another goes on none. This means that every middle school needs more diverse electives that are available regardless of which school is attended. This means every high school has to have the same activities and opportunities available for our young adults to explore as they grow into adulthood. And this also means that discipline must be administered equally among the schools for equal infractions and not based upon which school is more lenient or which is more strict. I want the best for my kid. I tell my kid all the time that she is the center of my world, not the center of the world, as she often believes. However, I want every kid to feel like they are the center of the world because they are part of Stafford County schools. The last question is possibly the one that means the most, and that was, "What is the most important to do well?" And the bottom line is, we can't do anything well or implement any ideas without proper and complete funding to do what we need to do. Every action our school district takes causes a funding line somewhere. A principal picks up a phone to call a parent. You pay the principal. You buy the phone. You buy the phone line. You maintain the office. You pay the office staff to maintain contact information. You buy the computer, the information is stored on. And you pay the license to access that application. Kind of like the old lady that swallowed a fly. It's all needed for one five-minute phone call. Multiply that by over 32,000 kids enrolled in Stafford County schools and millions of daily occurrences, and you quickly see how the school board got to the budget request being asked for tomorrow night. It all ties together, and it's not a small price tag because it is not a small undertaking. I encourage everyone to think about these three questions, then advocate your truth for our schools to the Board of Supervisors this budget season so we can get the funding to make our vision happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's it? Okay. Action item. Action item 8.01, Authorization for a Change in the Use of $820,872.49 from current project savings and award of contracts to renovate Rock Hill Elementary School during the summer of 2025.
Motion to approve.
Oh, sorry.
And a second?
I will second it.
Okay. Any discussion on this item?
We covered this item during the Fab C meeting this past... last week, and this was a project that got pulled because we didn't have enough funding, and now there is savings in order to get it done. So, it's not a new project.
But when... I'm sorry, Madam Chair. It's savings, but in other situations where we've had savings, it's not ours to use. In this one, it is ours to use.
Madam Chair, Jason Towery, apologize. Had an emergency call from home. We're okay. Kids are kids sometimes. But yes, this is a compilation of savings from six different areas, six different projects, a portion of which is from the Rock Hill Interior Project, which was previously fully funded and then was delayed at the... at some discussion with this board back last May. And as part of that, we also made a decision around that time, the Hampton Oaks Mechanical Project, which we needed to progress more urgently on the Stafford Middle School Project. That project was also delayed and has been placed back into the CIP. It is currently scheduled for 2030 on our end. The Board of Supervisors has said 2033 so far in what we've seen perhaps from the board's end. But yes, this is funds that are currently available that is appropriated to the school board and could be moved for this use.
Okay, I have the dumbest question on it because I'm not really good at math. But 802,000, right? And then underneath is the quotes that we're looking for to do this stuff, right?
Yes.
So, what are we actually re-appropriating, the whole 822 or the 562,000 from the Hampton Oaks? Do you understand? Like, up at top, it's like completed, completed, completed. The remaining funds on the Rock Hill Project are 154,000.
Right.
We're not pursuing Hampton Oaks Elementary Mechanical. That's 562. So, we've already allotted the 154 for Rock Hill, right?
Correct.
And the remaining balance from this Hampton Oaks is what we're asking to put towards Rock Hill?
As well as the remaining balances from Ferry Farm, Rock Hill, the Modular's, and Drew, which are above that.
They're completed, but those are remaining. We didn't spend those.
Right, but Rock Hill Elementary Interior... Oh, so we're just reassigning it to a different portion of what we want in Rock Hill. That's what's throwing me off, is that Rock Hill's on here, but we're talking about Rock Hill.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I'm sorry.
We had pulled the Rock Hill interiors.
No, I remember that. I absolutely remember that.
To re-appropriate.
But then I was reading this as Rock Hill Elementary, and I was like, "I'm confused." But I got you.
Yep.
For transparency and to really show the dedication, thank you, finance people. One of the amounts here is literally $52.79 left over from a roofing project at an elementary school, which is a big deal. It's not a small roof. But we are literally reappro... we saved and are re-appropriating $52.79. So, for people who don't think that we are pinching every penny, we absolutely are. And that is part of an $820,000 project now. So, big things.
And we're super transparent as well. Just saying.
Yes, and for people who don't think that we're transparent, that's... we are down to $52.79 on a single project that we were able to reallocate.
Ms. Healy?
How much is left in the original project that we, you know, had approved previously but had to pull because we didn't have funding? It says it was approximately $2 million, and now we're appropriating about 800. Is there, you know, still a significant amount of work that needs to be done at Rock Hill? I'm fully supportive of this, and thank you. But I just want to make sure, you know, people understand that this doesn't even get us back to where we were when we took the money away.
Great, yeah. No, great question. So, at the time when the board made that decision, we actually... we left about $80,000 to fix the bathroom partitions and doors that were falling. So, we did that over the past summer. This will go ahead and allow us to replace the carpet throughout the majority of the school, the ceiling tile, and do painting in the school. Just a new coat of paint, really, is what we're talking about here mostly. And I also apologize, some new cabinetry. So, we will actually take the sinks out and the plumbing fixtures out, put in new cabinetry, put the old sinks back in at this point. And then, our hope would be that with Phase 2, potentially, if the Board of Supervisors approves those funds, that we come back and replace the sinks and fixtures, some of those other items, perhaps the lighting, which is also fairly old.
Well, thank you for making this amount available for us to consider putting it on.
So, let's also highlight the inefficiency of not having enough money to do the job right in its totality. Like, if we could just go back and really, for the record, highlight what you just said. We have to pull out existing sinks to put in new stuffs, to put them back, to then in the future, ask for money to pull those sinks out again, which in the future may cost us even more money because we don't have enough money right now to complete this project in full for the totality of what we need. I think that's a disgrace, but I thank you for your patience and helping us all get through it. But I really think people need to start focusing on that. That is... that's disturbing to me. But not because of you. You're great.
Ah, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this topic? Please cast your votes. We've got a... we've got a couple of screens here. No? Please cast your votes. There we go. Thank you. Tally the votes. That passes seven to zero. Item 8.02, Authorization for Staff to Request Reimbursement in the amount of $104,648.59 from the county's School Emergency Reserve for the emergency heater replacement at Garrisonville Elementary School.
Motion to approve heat.
Second. Heat's good.
Discussion on this?
I just have a quick question. I see photos of this repair. I just want to make sure these are available for people, the public, to see if they clicked on this agenda item or is it just for us?
I know it should be on the agenda item.
Okay, there are photos of the repair and pictures worth a thousand words.
And we'll be sending this over to the county administrator with all of that as well.
No further discussion? Please cast your votes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 8.03, Approval of Funding Plan and Request to the Board of Supervisors for an Additional Appropriation for the Health Benefits Fund.
Motion to approve the additional appropriations for health benefits.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this?
I would appreciate an explanation just so the public can understand what it is we're doing here.
Ms. Fitch?
Sure. I apologize that I'm not Chris Fulmer, but thank you. So, this agenda item relates to this...
This is the Women's Month, so you're good.
We're on trend. So, this agenda item relates to the staff request for additional appropriation for the Health Benefits Fund. As sometimes typical this year, we do have the funds, but we need the appropriation, the legal authority, to spend it. As was discussed by Mr. Fulmer previously during the mid-year update, the Health Benefits Fund is currently facing medical claims that are dramatically higher than the budgeted amounts and also prior experience. Historically, we've budgeted really aggressively in the Health Benefits Fund because we've had a healthy fund balance, unfortunately, and we've had healthy surpluses. We have typically also trended under-market for our expenditures. Those positive trends have ended. So, we need to monitor this fund really closely, which staff has been doing. And so, therefore, we need to address the fact that expenditures are increasing faster than contributions to the fund, resulting in the exceeding of the fund balance. So, Mr. Fulmer introduced some strategies to handle this problem during the February 25th meeting. And tonight, we're bringing the request to address the $6.5 million for projected expenditures in Health Benefits Fund. The $6.5 million in the agenda item is proposed to be handled from a number of... for a couple of different pieces. The first one is 3.4 million from prior year fund balance, the prior year surpluses discussed previously. And then, the other 3.1 million coming from transfers from the operating fund to combined for the 6.5 needed for the health benefit expenditures. On the other side, in the operating fund, will come kind of also from two parts. The first part is utilizing some of the projected salary and benefits laps, some of those savings that we discussed in the mid-year update. So, for 1 million, we're using that to kind of handle this Health Benefits Fund. Additionally, we're looking for a reimbursement of the other post-employment benefits or OPEB Trust Fund to the operating fund of 2.1 million. That will then... those two amounts will be transferred to the Health Benefits Fund to cover that 6.5. The 1 million from the salary laps is obviously already in the budgeted funds. The OPEB Trust Fund, 2.1 million, was not in the budgeted funds. So, that's why that request is for the additional 2.1 in the operating fund that then makes up the 6.5 in the Health Benefits Fund. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
It's a lot of little pieces, so...
Much like our...
Any questions?
Ms. Healy?
And if you don't have the answer to this, we can get it in a memo. We added 4 million to the Health Benefits in the coming year's budget that we approved. Is this is more than the 4 million that we need this year? Is there a potential that we're going to need more than 4 million next year, and it's something we need to start, you know, looking at now?
Potentially. I think it'll be interesting on the trend of like the expenditure side. There are also, in addition to the increase from the operating fund into Health Benefits, there's also increases from employees, from the increase that the rates. So, the contributions from employees will be also increasing in the Health Benefits Fund and from all the other funds. But it's definitely something that we need to keep tracking when looking at the expenditures and the overall impact on that fund. But we can get you more information on that as well.
Yeah, I think Mr. Fulmer told us at one of our meetings that it basically cost us about $9,000 per employee that's not covered by what the employees are paying for the benefits. So, I just want to make sure we're not in a position like this next year that we may not have a lapse or we may not, you know, have something to draw from. So, if we need to be planning for it, it would be helpful to have that information before we sit down and do our reconciliation, you know, when we know what money is going to become available. Thank you.
We can definitely get updated information on that as well.
And Ms. Healy, just to respond a little bit to that, I do think, as you know, we've been on a pretty upward trajectory in terms of our claims and going up about 15% to 20%. We've been hearing from our insurance provider that they feel like that's going to level off. And so, we are hoping for that. You know, and I think the $4 million we have recommended for next year, we think will cover us. But if we continue to go on that trajectory, obviously, it would not. And so, that's why we're continuing to closely monitor that to see where we are.
Any other discussion? Please cast your votes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 8.04, Approval of an Appropriations Request to the Board of Supervisors for Carryover Purchase Orders in the amount of $157,8294... 200... I'm sorry, $204.92 from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25.
Motion to approve item 8.04.
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
So, this is stuff we've already spent, right? And these are just the purchase orders, like, we have already done contracts or whatever, but the items just didn't arrive last year, and so, we still need to pay for them as they arrive this year. Is that correct?
That's right, Dr. J. So, these are our open POs that we have that transfer over from one fiscal year to the next. We do have those open. This does look larger than normal just because of the capital projects fund as we're for our high school six and our capital projects. But this is... this is a normal thing that we do every year to roll over those POs.
And just for those who aren't looking at the attachment now, 100 and... over 140... a hundred and forty million of this is associated with capital projects. The remainder is, you know, a much smaller number. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes. That motion carries seven to zero. Item eight point zero five, Approval of Proposed Amendment to the Memorandum of Agreement between the School Board of Stafford County and the Stafford Education Foundation.
Motion to approve the MOU for the Stafford Education Foundation.
Second.
Is there discussion on this item?
I was interested in getting a little more information. We had at the Finance and Budget Committee, Ms. Johnson, who is the, the, I don't know what her title is, Administrator of the.
Executive Director.
Executive Director, thank you. We just had some questions about this six percent administrative fee, and so I don't know if, if we can get more information about that.
Ms. Healy?
I, I see here that this says that the effective date is January first of 2025. I would ask that if this were to be approved, it would not be effective until we actually approve it. I don't like retroactive, not knowing what might have happened. But, and, but I have, I have two, two comments. One, when we initially had the MOU with the Stafford Education Foundation, there was, you know, a, a very important point made that we had to have an independent relationship because of the, the tax-free status of the foundation. And I'd, I'd like to, you know, be assured that this has gone through whatever legal review it needs to go through, that this license and the, the, you know, the, the partnership that is in here is not in conflict with any of the regulations that permit the, the tax-free status, but that, that was why we did have it as, as independent. Now, we, we do provide the, the fiscal support in terms of our finance staff and also the administrative support. We've always done that, but this seems to be very much enlarging, you know, that co-relationship. So that's one, and, and the second one is, I think we really need to think about giving an outside organization, and, and I love the Stafford Education Foundation, it's no reflective on them, they do so much for us and, and, you know, really benefit us, but in, in view of the, the current situation with reviews and orders and, you know, threats of, you know, funding cuts, I think we, we need to, at a minimum, put in here any license we grant to, to an organization to use Stafford Schools and its name in connection with fundraising activities, our name, our brand, everything else. I don't see anything in here, and, and I could be missing it, that says that, that any use would be consistent with our policies and regulations, because if we just allow, you know, the, the use of our, our name, then I, I think that could potentially put us in a position of, you know, having our, you know, having challenges. And I don't, I want to avoid that, because I think we've made very much of an effort to make the point that our policies, our, you know, regulations, we are consistent with, you know, orders that are outstanding, and if we don't have any control over it, that, that could be very, you know, awkward and potentially damaging. Not suggesting it's going to happen, but we just don't want to give a, a blank, blank license there. And, and that's something else I want to make sure is consistent with the, the regulations, and I don't know the regulations for, you know, the five oh one C, whatever, but make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position that, you know, may create a, you know, a, a financial hardship, you know, to, to the education foundation if, in fact, we, you know, we cross whatever, wherever that line is. And the line may have moved from, you know, eleven years ago when we, when we set this up. So those, that's my, my, my primary concerns here.
So Ms. Healy, thank you for those questions. Ms. Boatwright is here with us tonight, and I know she may be able to speak to it more. She was involved in the review of this document, and so from the legal side, to take a look at that document, to make sure that it met all of our legal requirements, but then also, I, I do understand what you're saying in terms of the use of our name and logo. It does reference that in there, but it does not list some of the other pieces, so we'd be happy to add that if you'd like.
Are there other?
Do they even use our logo? They have their own.
It talks about it in Section A of the, of the agreement. It talks about that we can use each other's logos and names and as a part.
Oh, for advertising events. To, to grant a license is, is, you know, pretty broad allowance, and I, I just don't, I don't see us, and, and maybe a couple of months ago, I wouldn't even have thought of this being an issue, but today, in today's world, you know, I don't want to create us or put us in a position where we, we have any potential, you know, risk.
I actually agree.
I, um. I love them. I had a question about the under-financial relationship, and I don't know why it didn't hit me before, but both A and B say that alternating parties have ultimate authority. SEF, it doesn't say, so for B, it says Stafford Schools has the ultimate authority to accept or deny donations and gifts to Stafford Schools, blah, blah, blah. But for option, for item A, it says SEF has the ultimate authority to accept or deny donations and gifts. Do they accept them on their own behalf, or can they accept on our behalf, even if we're like, maybe that's not a good idea?
Thank you, Ms. Boatwright.
Sure. So the idea behind A was that SEF can accept any gifts and donations according to any applicable laws. Those don't necessarily have to be for us, and for B, we can accept it or we can deny it. So SEF can accept it, gifts, but we don't have to take it.
Thank you.
But we will make those clarifications that you brought up, Ms. Healy, thanks.
Have, have we looked at it from the, you know, that, that five oh one C, is it C three? I get the C, the numbers mixed up.
I think it's a C three, it's a tax exempt.
Under those requirements, because that was, that was one of the reasons we had this distinction and separation when it was set up.
Right.
And, and how we very specifically limited the resources that we made available, you know, under, under the, then existing regulations. So maybe they've changed since then.
So the SEF Board has also reviewed this and looked at it from its perspective. This just goes beyond a little bit what we currently have, which is basically, we act as a fiscal agent and we give them some administrative support. So it, it just broadens it and talks about our financial relationship, how we're going to market each other, what are the parameters for accepting gifts and donations of that sort, so. I don't think it really goes too much into that tax exempt piece that you're talking about.
What, this, how, how are you going to market? But basically, we're going to be like this. In effect, if, if we can use any of their logos, whatever, they can use ours. I mean, if they're presenting something, they could, under this, I think they could present it as Stafford County Schools. Whatever, their fundraising, whatever, it's also has them using our facilities, which I, I understand, but, and I understand waiving the, the facilities fee, but this is beyond, you know, what you're here for, Ms. Boatwright, but there, there is a charge for the facilities. We have to have a custodian, we generally have to have a supervisor, and that's overtime. So if we're going to be waiving the fee for that, then that means we're going to be picking up the tab. So that's, this, this is much more support than we've had. I'm not saying that I'm, you know, going to oppose it, but I, I think it's something that we need to, to recognize, that we, as a school system, are going to be putting a lot more, you know, into this than we were, and I, I, I'm, I, I can understand the, you know, the financial support, but it's just using our name on anything they want.
It is not exclusive, and so it, it does point.
Right, it's not, no, it's not exclusive, but it means they can use it. Like, say they have, you know, a race, and they want to call it the Stafford Schools Race. That's, under here, they can, they can do that, I mean.
It's in connection with us, though. So it's in connection with the fundraising activities of Stafford County Public Schools.
Right, but we don't have any control over what fundraising activities, what they're going to be used to raise the funds for, other than, you know, generally for scholarships. I, I, I just think at this point, unless there's a reason this has to be passed tonight, I would prefer that it be more fully thought out or, or reviewed in terms of protecting, you know, Stafford County Schools from any potential, you know, risk of charges that we're, you know, in violation of some order, regulation, you know, whatever. And again, this is not that I'm suggesting that they're going to do it, but if there's a possibility and we've allowed it, then it's on us.
But, Ms. Healy, would you like this to go back to governance? Would you like this to go back to governance?
Yeah, has this been to governance? I was going to say, I, I'm on governance.
It went to FAPC.
Could have been there, I haven't missed any meetings.
It went to FAPC.
It went to FAPC, but I can see, and, and we had questions about the six percent administrative fee. We, I don't think I realized it had been to governance first.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, that may be helpful, but. What I would, Ms. Boatwright, if you're comfortable giving us the legal opinion, or if we need to get outside legal, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not putting, you know, the, the benefit that the foundation provides for our students and our staff, we're not putting that at, at any risk, and that we're in adherence with, you know, with all the, certainly the, you know, the IRS regulations, and then we can look at the other one, maybe think about putting some restrictions on that. But I, I do appreciate, and I, I did talk to Dr. Smith and got some information about the, the six percent, that that doesn't apply to existing grants, because there are some grants, oh, Mr. Easley, that's the name, when I was talking with Dr. Smith, I couldn't remember the name, but Mr. Easley Scholarship and the Heather Enfield Scholarship, they were put, you know, in place by, you know, members of their families and, and their supporters and community who wanted to honor, you know, Mr. Easley and Heather Enfield, and one of the, the, the facts that we told the people to put in the money was, there's not going to be any, you know, fees charged, every penny you put in is going to go back to, you know, into the, into the grants. And that's when we were actually administering these grants in Stafford Schools, and for, for whatever reason, you know, financial, it was deemed advisable to have them administered by the foundation, but yet, I think our finance people are the ones that are doing all the work, even though technically, it's under, under their umbrella. So that, I, and I appreciate that being, you know, clarified that it, the existing grants, it's not going to, you know, apply to.
And I, and I believe we heard that if somebody in providing a grant to Stafford Schools indicated that it, that there could be no administrative fee, that that would also be, could be waived.
It is.
Dr. Smith, did the prior MOU have an expiration date? Are we operating without one?
It did have an expiration.
No expiration date, so we are, that is what we are currently operating under, and this would be an update. If, at the end of all of our research discussions, investigations on tax law or whatever we're looking at, if the board opts not to approve the MOU, what happens?
Then we have our existing one.
Okay.
That we can terminate. It does have a termination provision.
Can we include the existing MOU for the board?
It is a part of this.
Is it? We scroll all the way down?
Yeah. It's one of the attachments. It's the only attachment.
So we can confirm or compare them side by side? That'll be helpful.
Yep.
Okay. So the motion on the floor right now is to approve the MOU?
I'd like to make a substitute motion, that we send this back to governance, or we send it to governance.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Let's cast our votes on.
Well, we have to vote on the substitute motion?
Yes.
First, substitute motion first. Okay, seven to zero, send that to governance. That closes our action items. Dr. Smith, your report and comments.
All right. See if we get it pulled up here.
Sorry.
You're good. All right. Good evening, board members, members of the community. Thank you for being here with us online and in person. I'm excited to share some of the great things happening in Stafford Schools, as well as some updates. First, congratulations to Draven Williams, an eighth-grade student at Dixon Smith Middle School, who won the 2025 Fredericksburg Regional Spelling Bee at James Renaro High School, Correctly Spelling Wobulator. We wish Draven as well as he represents the division in the Scripps National Spelling Bee that will take place in Maryland. If you're like me, you did not know what Wobulator is. It is a testing device for radio sets, and I love how we keep learning together each and every day. On March first, Stafford Schools hosted an I'm Determined Echo Event. Participating families and their students learned about the three pillars of I'm Determined: competence, autonomy, and relatedness. The Echo Event provided opportunities for youth and parents to increase learning, advance self-determination, and strengthen interpersonal relationships through breakout sessions, where each one developed a one-pager detailing their strengths, their preferences, interests, and needs. This evening, as a part of our work session, the school board reviewed the initial boundary change scenarios required as we build two new elementary schools, Elementary School eighteen and nineteen. I do want to take this opportunity to remind our community that these scenarios will be available on our website tomorrow morning, and we'll be hosting our community town halls on March thirteenth at 6:00 PM at Stafford High School, and again on April first at 6:00 PM at North Stafford High School. I am rapidly coming to an end of my entry period into Stafford Schools, and I've truly appreciated all the staff, community members, students, and parents who've taken the time to talk with me about their experiences in our school division. Just a quick note, I will be hosting our final connections session on March seventeenth, next Monday, at Ferry Farm Elementary Schools. And as a reminder, you can always provide digital feedback. The QR code is located here on the screen, or at staffordschools.net/connections. As we continue to work on improving our transportation efficiency, we're implementing a new opt-in selection for school bus services, as recommended by our external review. In previous years, transportation was automatically assigned to all eligible students, whether they used it or not, and as you can imagine, this created an initial set of inefficient routes. Moving forward, at the beginning of the next school year, families will need to opt in if they want their child to receive bus transportation. This change allows us to create more efficient routes, reduce unnecessary stops, and improve on-time arrivals, ultimately enhancing the experience for our students, families, and drivers. Families will receive more information regarding this change, along with a link to complete the selection form on April eighth. Over the past few weeks, I've heard comments from community members and elected officials suggesting that our schools are failing or declining, and that's simply not true, and I wanted to speak to that just briefly this evening. Our students and staff continue to make academic progress, and the data supports this. Since 2021, we've seen gains in student achievement, as reflected in our SOL pass rates, which are publicly available on the Virginia Department of Education's School Quality Profile. For example, our reading scores have increased four percentage points since 2021. Mathematics has improved by eighteen percentage points over that same period. Science, as you can see, has risen by ten percentage points, and we now align with the state average. History and social studies scores have increased by nine points since 2021. But it's also important to note that beyond our SOL scores, we're also making meaningful strides in key areas that prepare our students for future success. In early literacy, performance has largely returned to pre-pandemic levels, with significant gains for all student groups, particularly students with. particularly students with disabilities and our English learners. In dual enrollment, we've seen a 77% increase in the number of students taking these college-level courses since 2021. Just two years, just three years ago, 737 students were taking, were enrolled in taking these courses. And now that has grown to over 1,300 students taking nearly 2,000 courses. We've also expanded course offerings from six to, in 2022, to 13 this year. And advanced placement enrollment has returned to pre-pandemic levels as well, with nearly 2,000 students taking over 3,400 AP exams. These are college credits. Of those students, an impressive 67% of them earned a score of three or higher, which usually earns them college credit at their institution they choose to attend. But these are just a few examples of the progress our schools are making. Additional grade level and demographic detail can be found in the October 2024 School Board Work Session Presentation. You can also take a look at the Virginia School Quality Profiles to find additional information about student achievement, college and career readiness, program completion, school safety, teacher quality, and many other topics that may be of interest to parents and the general public. While we will, will cleanly acknowledge there is always work to be done and we can continuously improve, the data clearly shows that Stafford County Public Schools is moving in the right direction. Thank you, Chair Sigmund. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Board member comments and committee reports. Dr. Chase, would you like to begin?
I don't have any reports at this time. I am looking forward, hopefully, to meeting with the Board of Supervisors tomorrow evening to present our budget and hopefully have a productive dialogue. Thank you.
Dr. Warner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, today I had the wonderful opportunity of attending the luncheon with our students and we have some really smart kids in our county. I just wanna say how impressed I am and how proud of them I am, I are, I am. I need more coffee. It was interesting listening to the three questions that Ms. Denham referenced because the students referenced those same questions. And the most important thing, the thing they said that we were doing well was the opportunities that we provided in both CTE and advanced learning, dual enrollment, and the choices that they had and especially as they entered high school, and they really appreciated that. The things that they said we need to work on was recognizing the diversity in our schools and accepting people where they are and being more supportive, because they said sometimes that leads to bullying issues and other challenges that are much harder to deal with. But the thing that really struck me was they said, what was the most important thing? They focused on the teachers and how valuable the teachers are in their classroom. And I thought that was such an excellent insight from our kids and I was really impressed. The Finance and Budget Committee met and I would be happy to report that our school construction projects are on time and on budget. And I just think that I'd like to make a comment about public comments. I think it's very important for all citizens to have the opportunity to talk about what's going on in the schools, to talk about their concerns about the budget. And I recognize that being such a large part of the county budget, it is kind of an important issue for people. But part of that is, is there's a part in there that says we shouldn't be abusive. And I think that when you're asked to stand task and to stay on topic, that's an important thing. But I also think it's inappropriate to call it specific members of the audience, especially when you reference children. I think that's when you cross the line and it is abusive. So I, I just think I wanna make sure that everyone feels welcome to give their opinion and that the main thing is the main thing and the main thing is our students and how we are doing. And that's, and I also look forward to tomorrow night when we get to meet with the Board of Supervisors and present our budget request. It's, it's a challenging time, but I think that we work very hard to make sure that we are focused on what the budget needs are. And we are trying to do as much as we can with what we have.
Thank you. Ms. Randall?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First of all, I would like to congratulate formerly known Dr. Rice, who's now Dr. Robertson. That was, I kept thinking, God, he's in meetings with her all the time. Why is he getting her name wrong today when we were at the student forum? And the first time I thought, oh, maybe I just didn't hear it right. And the second time, I turned to Ms. Sigmund and I was like, what is wrong with him? That he doesn't remember her name? And so she walked over and she goes, she got married. So congratulations to you. It was a really nice time to attend that high school forum. Dr. Schutz, oh my gosh, she was such a natural with those kids, did such a good job of, of getting concise what their, what their meanings were and then going on and keeping it moving and really engaging with the kids. You did such a great, great job with that. And thank you too, Dr. Smith, for all your interactions with the kids, too. I remember the Mountain View kids were like, we have to get our bus, we're gonna miss our bus. We want a picture. And they were all talking to each other and I said, you want a picture with them? Yes. And I said, I'll get them. Get over here and get the picture. And so it was so great that you did that, cuz they felt like really extra special to have that opportunity with and access to you as well. I would also like to give a shout out to two students who earned kindness ambassadors at Dixon Smith Element, uh, Middle School. They were recognized, they were actually nominated by Lisa Arthur, their gifted teacher, and Susan Van Hazy, I don't know if I got that right. She's their ELL teacher. And so two people from the Virginia Department of Education drove up just for the purpose of recognizing them in a special ceremony. So I really appreciate that we have some really great kindness ambassadors. In middle school is super hard, so great that they can do that. I got an opportunity to visit some other schools these last couple of weeks. I have to keep booking them and then snow days happen and book them again and snow days happen, so it's taken me a while to get in. But what I thought was really interesting is I went into Stafford Middle School and I said, what is your biggest issue that you're having with the kids? And he said, they just won't stop touching each other. And I was like, oh, okay. Then I went into Hartwood Elementary School and I see this woman walking down the hall with a shoulder of hula hoops. And I thought, is that the PE teacher? And he said, no, it's our counselor, who by the way occupies, one counselor occupies a closet that houses like their brooms and mops and stuff like that. And the other one also houses another industrial closet. But anyways, he said, no, that's our counselor. And I was like, why does she have all the hula hoops? And he said, he's, she's doing an activity where the kids have to move around the room with hula hoops so they can learn personal space and don't touch each other. And I thought, oh, move that to middle school. So anyways, it was, it's really so fun when you go in the schools and, and just see the energy and the relationships with the principals and the staff and the students. Oh, it just gives you all the feels. I even got invited to a cardio drumming with kindergartners, but I really was embarrassed and thinking I was gonna blow it. Thankfully, there was this snow day, but I will go back and try it again. But anyways, I would also like to shout out and appreciation in advance of our meeting tomorrow evening with the supervisors. Ms. Halsted and I, on the regular, have meetings with Daryl English and Deonte Diggs. And we're both very fortunate for our relationships with them. And even though they differ with us in some of our things that we're asking for, they are open to dialogue with us. We had many agreements, we had many disagreements. All of us realizing we got a long road through this budget season in a, in a very, feels like a short amount of time. But I, I do wanna give them the thanks because no matter what, when we call and ask for this, they clear their calendar so that we can have breakfast with them and good discussions. I would also like to just kinda give a, a governance. Governance, we found, Ms. Boatwright told us that we have 109 policies that are out of date. And they gave us a calendar of how we're going to move through this year to complete all 109 policies. So get your, get your readers out of the back room. We're working through this quick. So, but those will be coming to you pretty regularly, just so that you're aware. But I also wanted to talk about ATI. We had our meeting a couple of weeks ago and they have, Dr. Towery has done such an amazing job with recruitment in counties where it's just really hard. It's far for her and the opportunities are small. But she has still worked mightily at this job and I'm just so proud because of the 60 seats that we have, we have filled 56 of our 60 seats. The others, as you know, with all of them, everybody teeters, changes their minds. And of the current ninth graders, those 60 seats, we have 57 of them filled still for next year. And two of the vacant seats are now filled with kids that wanted to get, you know, we talked about exit ramps and on-ramps. And so this is two kids that wanna come on, third one possible. So I just really wanted to commend her in the job that she's done and working with all the other counties. I'm, I can assume Dr. Chase has similar experience. Working together with the other boards, it's just so nice to see the hearts of so many counties coming together for a really special opportunity for these kids. We have started, and I have Dr. Chase to thank for this as well, we have started our review process and Dr. Smith is working with us on her review, working with Rebecca, or sorry, Dr. Towery. And so that's coming along as well. We should have that completed. I think by the end of May, we'll have that done. I just would like to encourage everyone to, when you were looking at the transportation, I, I read some things where people forgot or thought that this was, this elementary opt-in was also about changing high school, changing middle school. It is not. It's strictly elementary school that we're talking about. But I would also like to, as Ms. Halsted often reminds us, to manage our expectations. Because these next three years between starting the opt-in and potentially doing the sister school thing year one, we have a redistricting year two, and then we might have course corrections year three. So this may be a multi-year switching process. So I just wanna make sure that our families in elementary school are sort of managing their expectations about what that might look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Haley?
Thank you, Ms. Sigmund. First, I wanna thank Dr. Smith and Mr. Lionel White for an excellent presentation on the elementary school redistricting. I cannot imagine the work that went into that. As Mr. White told us, every elementary school in the county is affected by this. I mean, he gave us very, you know, logical possibilities. And more importantly to me is the charts that he came out, you know, tell significant facts that I don't have to spend hours trying to figure out myself. So maybe, maybe he's, he's learned from us, this is what we're gonna ask him and, you know, come up with it in advance. But it really was a great presentation and I'm looking forward to the, the community engagement to hear the, the public comment on it. And I would encourage families, if you have questions about it, to contact Mr. White. His information is in the, you know, in the presentation, which I assume is gonna be on our website, you know, by, by tomorrow. Because there are going to be, you know, a lot of changes. But I'm also very grateful that we are doing this a year in advance. So that gives us time to really have a smooth transition. Because it's so important when we're moving students to a different school, whether it's a brand-new school or an existing school, it's so important that the, that the faculty from the school where they were has contact with the faculty in, in the new school so that it is a smooth transition that, you know, and needs of individual students and their families are recognized and able to be accommodated. And this year, you know, notice, I think, is, we're gonna be extremely helpful. And I, I think we had a very good dialogue about the, the Title I schools and the class size reduction schools. And that's something that we as a board are going to need to address before we begin the, the staffing process for, you know, all of the schools. Because the teachers from the new school are pretty much gonna come from the other schools. I mean, we're gonna have some positions we're gonna have to fill. But, but I, I wanna make sure that that's smooth for, for the families and the students. Because our schools are, are like family for a lot of our, our, our community. And it's going to be hard moving. No matter where you're moving to, it's gonna be hard. And the, the more we can do to, to make that smooth is, is in my mind, you know, better. Second, I wanted to, to recognize and thank Mr. Deonte Diggs, the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, for inviting the school board to have a dialogue, to sit down with the Board of Supervisors as part of their retreat. And we all know, you know, retreats are time to get away, to reflect, you know, to have, you know, more of a unstructured or casual, you know, discussion. And I think that that was, that was very, very thoughtful of him. And I don't recall anything like that ever happening, you know, in the past. I think he wants to ensure that, that we maintain, you know, open dialogues and have a, a good working relationship. And it was a very good precursor to our meeting tomorrow. Because I can tell you from years in the past, we've had some pretty difficult budget presentations. I mean, we would go and we would stand at the podium across the street and, you know, we'd have one person up there, whoever was the bravest, and the rest of us would be lined up in a row and waiting for that squad to come out and, you know, start hammering at us. I mean, I'm talking about a long time ago, but, but Dr. Chase is, is remembering some of those days as well. So this is, this is, things are so much better and, you know, in terms of the relationship. And, and I, I feel like we are being heard and I, I think, I attribute a lot of that to Mr. Diggs and, and the leadership that he is giving to the Board of Supervisors. My final comment is it's Gator Week at Garrisonville. So if, if, if anyone out here has any interest in having a good time in watching school spirit at its absolute highest peak, check out Garrisonville this week. And Friday is when the Gator wrappers come, which is an amazing time. And all the kids and A.G. Wright on the other side of the partition are crying because they can't be over at Garrisonville, you know, to participate. Yes, but most of them, you know, went to Garrisonville or, you know, a, a large number of them. And they just, they really wanna be back for Gator, Gator Week. And I look forward to visiting Garrisonville with Ms. Sigmund on, on Friday, the favorite day of the week. And also, if you go through the communities where the Garrisonville students live, you'll see lots of decorations in orange and green. And I mean, the spirit is, 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 is out there for everyone to see. I know all our schools have spirit, but, you know, everybody knows that Garrisonville bleeds green. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Halsted?
Okay, so I, I just wanna say thank you to the folks from Hartwood that came out and consistently come out for and represent Hartwood. I was at the community meeting last night and I would hope there'd be a couple more people there, but we have the least number of people in the biggest geography, so I'm, I'm giving them that. But I am so grateful to the people that do constantly come out and give voice for Hartwood here, but across the street as well. So in that regard, you know, I only have a couple of comments tonight. And, and for me, it's just about the angst that budget season brings to all of us and for all of us. And, and I, you know, I keep going back and forth and, and looking at, you know, all the promises that have been made in the past to kinda help support building revenue, revenue infrastructure for this county that will help the schools become what they need to be and where those promises have fallen flat and why. And I, I can't get to the whys or the wheres or even the hows at this point. But I think at, that once again, we, we, the board, are left begging our parents, our teachers, our principals, our citizens in general, just to go and, and, you know, really remind, and it saddens me to say that we have to remind them how important the school system is to this county. We've all sat up here right now and in the course of time talked about all the things that our kids have done. things that our kids have done and are capable of doing and the impact they're gonna have when they leave these buildings and go on into this world. There, there'll be doctors and nurses and, you know, farmers and pharmacists and auto mechanics. And none of us can survive without any of those. So I don't know how we build a future around kids that we haven't invested every dollar in. I just, I don't know how. And so when I look at this and I see all of the arguments that we have to have, I, I don't know how one can look at us. And I get the competing priorities and we've all taken a look at what they have and, you know, what they have to do. But year and, year after year after year, we get to a point where the system is having to beg them to go back and do what they should have been doing all year long to get us to the point that we needed to be at. It is no surprise that budget season is coming. It is no surprise that the school system is growing. It is no surprise that, that we are in the middle of unsustainable growth. And so three things really bother me, and that is the constant fallback of, I didn't make this problem. I didn't either, but I voted, I ran and was elected to help solve it. So I'm not asking for anyone to, to, you don't have to take any responsibility for what happened before you got on the board, but I am asking them to take responsibility now that they're on it. Because for three years, it's been a struggle to get them to understand that you invest in the val- that the investment in the value of the community is in the kids that that community produces. And that shouldn't be something that we have to say, ever. That should just be known by everyone. So, so I look at the things like, you know, oh my God, the things that our teachers and our bus drivers and our support staff do. And then we got, ah, like, they do it because they love it. Well, right? I do too. I also loved being a, a grocery clerk when I was seventeen. That wasn't sustainable over time. And so I guess from the bottom of my heart, I just want to reiterate that this board will fight as hard as we can to do what we can to get the budget through that we need. And when that money comes through, we will look painfully at what we can and cannot do with the money we've been given. But please know that in our hearts, um, it is devastating to all of us that when we ask for money, we have to go through this period. And it's not a short period of time. It's a big period of time. And it's a time where people are going, are they gonna tell me they value me or not? That's what that bottom line is, and you can't couch that any other way. You just can't. There is an employee in this world that isn't sitting around saying that their money, I mean, uh, proclamations and those things are all nice and recognition. But I gotta put food on my table and I gotta meet my rent, or my mortgage, or my car payment, or my oil change, or my tires. Like, those are the things that we're asking for. We're not asking. And it's frustrating to me to see some of the comments I've seen from the public that are not true, that have not been researched all the way through, that are easily, the answers are easily accessible if you do the work. If you go, you don't even have to do the work. All you have to do is QR codes, take a picture of it. You can get right to our budget book. It's online. It's there. It is all there. Every dollar is there. And so as a reminder, last year, a, what was it, one hundred and seventy-degree water pipe broke in the middle of Rodney Thompson. We dodged a very big bullet by that not falling on children eating lunch. And so when we talk about the failing systems in Stafford County and the Stafford County schools, it is because of the neglect that our buildings have sustained by nickel-diming projects like we saw tonight. Because we can't do them to the full potential that we need them to be done. And in many cases, we've had to MacGyver solutions for them to save a dollar. This comes at the safety and the risk of our children who are in these schools all day. And our teachers who are responsible for those children and their safety and those extra concerns that they carry. And for me, that's worth the extra dollars in and of itself, all alone. So I just want everyone to know that as we approach tomorrow night and the nights after, when it gets contentious and people start talking about the school board and start saying all these whatever irresponsible things we supposedly have done, it is not true. It is not true. Because take a look at the pictures. Go back. Take a look at the Rodney Thompson infrastructure. Take a look at the pictures from Garrisonville Elementary School. Take a look at the Brookpoint High School systems. Go take a look at Drew. Ask any teacher to send you a picture of a cockroach that has fallen from the ceiling and landed on her desk while she's teaching children. Like, this is unacceptable. This is tw- two thousand twenty-five. And those are archaic structures. We have asked the Board of Supervisors to help us fix that and to help us show our kids that we're investing in their future by providing the support staff who give them all their love and all their attention during the day, the money they've earned and deserve to get those kids to and from Point A and Point B while mom and dad are out at work. I mean, we can pick on the public education system all we want, but at the end of the day, all I see is a group of really well-intentioned folks who over the years have, are just drowning in changing mandates, uh, SOL things that are changing. Teach the kids to the test, don't teach the, the kids to learn. And yet, they just swim upstream every time with the, just trying to get things, just clearing and they keep going and they keep going for your kids. So please, when we go to these budget meetings and we go through this next process, if you have a question about what's going on, don't just get up in front of here and start accusing people. Ask the questions. Our people are very good about getting information to you if you want it, or if you, if you absolutely have to have it, if you question it. But to sit here and find somebody said that we need to go through and now line item out every piece of furniture that we're gonna buy? Come on. Let's use some common sense. And, and you want us to do that and not pay the people any extra money to do all that extra work? That is phenomenal to me. Because I don't think anyone out there coming up here to complain about it would go to work day after day after day like our teachers and not get paid for doing all of the work that they're asked to do and above and beyond and over and again and never question it. So, that is all I have to say on that. And I really hope that tomorrow, many of you will show up to the Board of Supervisor, School Board Joint Meeting and help us advocate, give that show of support because our teachers and staff deserve it, our principals, administrator, our central office staff. We all deserve that show of support tomorrow um, as we go and ask to please invest in the future of this county and our kids.
Ms. Guy.
I love it when a Republican is so pro-education. I'm just saying, I do, I love it. You don't get to see it often and I really appreciate. I know you're pro-kids, you're pro-Stafford, and I love that. I love Stafford too. Um, and I just want to echo what you said, we have the best staff, the best group of humans working for us. Sometimes they don't like us, sometimes they don't like the kids. I don't blame you because I don't either, and one is mine. But we still, they still keep doing it. I always say that um, all educators have superpowers. And your superpower is like that passion that you love to, you know, whether it be music or math or whatever, you love to, um, like, connect with the students and, and pa- pass that passion along. It's also, you're a kryptonite because we've been defunding education for like fifteen, twenty years, not just in this county, but nationwide. And so you keep on doing more with less. And so that's where we end up. Um, so I would also like to just ask the community to pay attention and to make it make sense. Um, don't listen to rhetoric, check your facts. Whatever you hear, that person you voted for, the person you didn't vote for, but they talk really, really fast and sound really, really smart, check their facts. Because what this county is lacking is fact checkers. I see people say things all the time. It's mostly not true. Check their facts. The numbers do not lie. Our budget is the most transparent, easy-to-find budget of any entity in Stafford County, hands down. I will bet someone to come up and prove me wrong. I can only bet ten dollars because I only make eight hundred dollars a month. So that's, that's it. But if you want my ten dollars, come meet me, all right? And let's, let me prove to you, we have a very transparent budget and we're very open with it. It's on the website somewhere. Um, you can find it. Uh, maybe I'll put it on my social media. So just fact-check everything, make it make sense. Um, this is a, well, we're going through election this year, so it's a new board. All the boards can't be lying. Like, there's, there's gotta be a level where someone has to be telling the truth. And you, you've got seven individuals here who are very different, and let's just be true, if we didn't work together, half of us would never speak to each other. But we agree on this budget, that means something. So, don't just listen to what I say or any one of us says or any Board of Supervisor, but fact-check that stuff, y'all. Because you go out and you start repeating certain things that certain people say, and it's really hard to respect you. And you lose your credibility if you just listen to what you're told or spoon-fed. So a, a good citizen, you know, trust but verify. Who'd we get that from? Reagan, I think. And he, we needed to verify him a little bit more. But yeah, so trust but verify, check, you know, check what you're spewing out because a lot of times, it's just not true. Um, this is gonna be a really, really tough time for everybody. Also, you have people running for office. Let's just not forget that each argument or each issue behind that is a person. You know, I mean, I've got feelings, you've got feelings, and, you know, everyone has feelings, so let's try not to attack each other. You know, ask questions. If you gotta attack something, attack a policy, attack rhetoric, but try not to attack people, please, because our children are watching. And even if you don't say the thing, your kid knows you're thinking it. They can sense that energy. And you know, if you're not a kind person, you know, your kids know. So just try to be decent towards one another this um, budget cycle, this election season, and um, let's just hope we, we can all get through it. Thank you.
Gosh, I hate going last. Dr. Smith covered the, what I was really going to focus on is that our test scores are not declining. Um, I'm glad that he put up the sources. I'm actually gonna put it on my social media with the link to the VDOE because I think that's important. Um, it is very frustrating to me, first and foremost, as a parent of children in schools, to see a lot of Stafford County Public Schools education experts come out of the woodwork and start speaking on social media or at meetings that really haven't done their homework. They tend to get their, you know, their facts from national news. They may be national facts, but we need to talk about what's happening in Stafford. Um, if you do not know what's happening in Stafford, I invite you to come to a meeting to ask us. Um, anybody wants to know how many locally-elected officials or community leaders have reached out to me about budget or concerns in the schools, I will happily tell you. You can FOIA my emails. You can FOIA all of our emails and every elected official's emails. They are in there. So if you want to know, is, are their inboxes really full? It is too much work, but you could charge for it. Sorry, Doc, poor Dr. Stempel. Not here. Go ahead. Sorry. But at the end of the day, we're not talking truth. And when we talk to people, when we have people with very big voices in the community talking about things that are happening on our schools, and it is the first time they have spoken about our schools, they've never visited our schools, they don't come into our schools, they are not school-connected, they don't talk to people who are connected to schools, it is incredibly frustrating to those of us who are dealing with the problems they deny exist every single day. Um, broken record, I have four kids. I'm, well, I'm re- I do have four kids. I'm registering our fourth kid for school in six days. Um, and he is very excited. So in August, I will have a kindergartner, I will have a seventh grader, I will have a ninth grader, I will have a twelfth grader, and they will be attending one, two, three, four, five different schools. Um, and they have been very active in all of our schools. Um, I spend a lot of time in our buildings, a lot. Um, so when I see people saying, this is happening or this isn't happening because I saw it on Facebook or Instagram, um, but I know, because I've asked these lovely ladies, that nobody has asked them about this particular issue, please, 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 consider your source and get a local source, preferably somebody sitting up here or in here. Um, and think before you speak. I keep going back, I guess, a couple of days, I've been thinking a lot about the Aesop's fable, the wolf and sheep's clothing. And I wonder why people who previously had no opinion on schools or negative opinion on schools pretend, you know, from February to April, that they care about schools. Um, and they speak like experts on schools and they've become PhDs on Stafford County Public Schools. Um, and it's, it's mind-boggling. So please, we are here, um, maybe don't FOIA us, just call and ask and one of us, one of us up here, because we'll spread out our eight hundred dollars a month to um, cover your, your, your answers. But the point is to become involved, invite your neighbors to become involved and let them know how great our schools are despite the hardships we go through because it is so much fun. Dr. Smith and I, and Maya, visited Anthony Burns this week and we visited Stafford Middle. And um, we are going to Gatorland, which I am very excited about. Um, we have a visit coming up to North. We have high school orientation coming up, which I cannot believe. We have kindergarten registration coming up, uh, which I can believe. Um, it's just, there is so many amazing things happening in our schools all the time. All the arts teachers that were here now, the things that they do outside of just be, just being arts teachers is incredible. You talk about how much time they're spending extra and above to, um, you know, their instructional time is great, but then what, what's the fun of learning if you don't have a concert or a show or a performance to kind of capstone that off? And that is so much work for the parents and the other teachers and school staff that support it. Um, and for that teacher to give our children that opportunity, it's just incredible, you know. I, I'm just so grateful every day. Um, I could go on and on, but I will not. So, future meetings tomorrow, Board of Email. Um, we do present our budget to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow. It is in the ABC Conference Room, which is the upstairs room in the Government Center. That is at five PM. Um, a change, we did have a work session scheduled for March eighteenth. We have moved that to accommodate for the Board of Supervisors meeting on the eighteenth, as well as high school orientation. So we will be meeting on March twentieth for our work session at seven PM. And then on April eighth, we will have a work session at five PM, as well as our monthly business meeting at seven PM. I hope everybody has a fantastic spring break and this meeting is adjourned.